Yeah, exactly. Well, they do hops all the time between the base to the island. Okay. And then there's all over the UK, Good England. Then there's Diego Garcia. And it's ran by the British. I was like, ooh, party island, gotcha. And then there's Ascension Island. That's in the middle of the Atlantic. Another Brit— well, another ran by the British, so another party island. Yeah, but those would be— it'd be short tours. He'd only be there for a year. And they're looking for intel officers that have degrees in a foreign language.
All right. Well, I will talk to you soon. Hi!
But the minister excited that we go on scene with 30 seconds. You're welcome. Is he gonna start the meeting without the—
Not this time.
Yeah? Yeah? Yes, sir?
Harold and Herb?
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no. You're good. You're good.
Oh, great. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah.
You've looked at the agenda. How long do you think the meeting is gonna go?
We take care of each other. Yeah.
I think we'll be out of here before 7:30.
Turn around and I pull everybody in the neighborhood off like this.
So, if it takes us longer than 7:30, you owe me a dollar.
Oh, yeah?
Do you?
Yes.
Is that an incentive for me to shut up?
And I owe her a dollar. So, there's my dollar if it goes past 7:30.
I mean, if we're gambling, I'm not too sure I'm gonna do this.
I'll even add the peppermint on it. But this is what we do every meeting, she and I.
You all really owe us a lot. We're gonna put a jar—
But if it goes longer than eight—
Well, let's put it this way. Since you left on my island, I'll be easy.
Whoa! Fair enough.
All right.
Shots fired.
All right, you ready for me, Deborah?
Are we working today?
We are working today. My audio, my best. Yes, we're— we're recording.
All right, let's call this meeting to order then at 5:30.
Please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Now, we gotta do the roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
We'll do that standing.
Let's do that standing. So, can we have a roll call, please?
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Polk County, representing District Two.
Bill King, District Three.
Harold Stein, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Aaron Schroeder, Mayor. All right, please run.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Rodney?
Good fellow. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to gather and talk about the business of this city. Father, we ask God that minds be clear, Father, that wisdom will prevail, and, Father, that this city would be used as a light unto all the— all the rest of the surrounding community. Father, that we are your kindness and love towards others in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. All right, first item or next item is citizens' comments. Would anybody like to speak for citizens' comments?
Let's see, one, two.
Just please tell us your name and your address.
My name is John Collins. My address is 209 River Bluff.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I have a grave concern that the animal which kills four times more Americans than any other is roaming the streets and yards of River Bluff. This animal kills 200 times more Americans than either alligators, bears, or sharks. There may be some here tonight who may scoff when I tell you that this animal is the deer. Some may doubt the veracity of the facts I have just given you. Those facts can easily be verified by doing an Internet search for what animal kills the most Americans. Obviously, the act of feeding these deadly animals helps to bring them into our neighborhoods and jeopardizes the life and limb of one's neighbors. Since the presence of deer in our residential areas represents a clear and present danger to the life and health of the citizens of Casterville, and the act of feeding deer helps to bring them into our residential areas, I ask the Casterville City Council to pass an ordinance prohibiting the feeding of deer within the city limits of Casterville. This ordinance should prescribe appropriate punishment for being caught doing so. I make this request in an attempt to protect my fellow citizens, something I apparently have been doing all my life. Mr. Mayor and members of the Casterville City Council, I thank you for your kind attention.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
Helen?
Good evening. I'm Helen Delavan, 1105 Lisbon, Casterville. I have not stood at this podium in quite a while, but thanks to livestream, I have been watching and listening from the comfort of my rocking chair. For what is worth, with very few exceptions, I have been very pleased with what I've seen and heard. I've been especially happy to note the harmony and the spirit of cooperation with which you all discussed and deliberate the issues. It's not always been so, as many of you know, and it's very nice to see. I'm here in person this evening because I hear that once again, some thought is being given to charging a daily entrance fee to the park. And once again, I wish to go on record as being absolutely, positively in opposition. Charging a per-person fee for special events like Easter is great. It's even better than charging per car, as we used to do, because it cannot be abused and because it's fair. But charging people to enjoy outdoors on a daily or half-hour basis is just plain wrong. I even view it as discriminatory, and that's a word I very seldom use. It would also be very expensive to implement, very expensive. Why? Because there's not just one entrance to our park. People walk into the park from Cross Hill, from the river, from the canal, from Idina River West and points in between. And you cannot logistically control that unless, of course, you erect like an eight-foot-high chain-link fence all around the perimeter of the park. And then you'd have to hire people to police the river, because they'll come in from there, too. I have heard, and I've heard this for many years, that Casterville taxpayers would not be allowed to enter free, but everyone else would. So, some soccer kids would be free and some soccer kids would not. I don't see that as fair. I can already visualize the bottleneck at the gate. I've also heard the possibility, and this, too, I've heard for years, of just collecting from the cars. People would walk in and they would be free, but they would have to pay to drive their cars and park in the park. Great. To avoid that fee, they'll either not come at all, or they could be parking in front of my house again. I can visualize that bottleneck, too. Some people, and they say this all the time, "I never go to the park, so why should my taxes pay for it?" The answer to that is pretty simple, for the same reason that your taxes pay for roads you do not drive on. You are part of a community. There are jillion articles out there on the benefits of parks and green spaces. It's well documented that parks foster mental, spiritual, and physical health. But the real power of parks, in my opinion, is that they transcend age, ethnicity, income, geography, even politics. They should just be free for everyone. I will always listen and consider every possible plan or proposal for increasing revenue to improve the parks. But charging people, no matter from whence they come, to have lunch, sit by the river, read a book, hike, just walk around a few times, or to just watch the river rippling by, is not one of them. It's just plain wrong. Thank you so much for your attention. I'm going back to my rocking chair now.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Helen. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right, thank you. Next item is consent agenda. This is minutes for September 13th, 2022, City Council meeting. Do we have a motion on that?
I'm moving, except the minutes is written.
Add seconds.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Actually, I shouldn't vote him, but I wouldn't hear.
Oh, for shame.
Go ahead, Stan.
Thank you. The next item, we're actually gonna move number seven to the end right before adjournment, so we're gonna— we're gonna table that one for right now. Okay, so the next one is a public hearing to consider the advisability of the Casterville East Side Public Improvement District, number four. We're gonna open the public hearing at 5:39. Do we have any discussion on that from the public? All right.
What's that?
Did you have anything for that?
He says he's moving.
Oh, yes, I'm moving number seven to the—
I apologize.
Just before adjournment. Okay, and you got the public hearing opening time? All right. Did you have anything on this?
No, I was just gonna show this. This is the notice of the public hearing that was published, and it has a few facts and information about the public hearing itself, or about the Pid that's being proposed for the benefit of those present. It describes the boundaries, the estimated cost of improvements. Just for the council's awareness, this public hearing is required by state law. It does not obligate us to authorize a fit at this stage. That's part of the ongoing negotiations with the development agreement, which we are gonna discuss in executive session this evening. Tonight, there's not action on the development agreement or the Pid. That will come at the October 11th meeting, or possibly at a special meeting that would be called after that.
Great.
Where is this district exactly?
If you'll scroll down just a little bit, Scott?
Yeah.
So, that is the old Vanderwinkle Farm, just west of the airport. Can you see that up there? It's kind of highlighted in the white.
Right behind Old Ninety on Keller.
Yeah, just south of—
From the new church is chicken.
Well, it's all true.
Where Old Highway Ninety listed is down there.
Yes.
Golden Chicken, right?
Both.
Yes. Both, yeah.
Well, you can pretty much say anything is across from the chicken place, and you've got the town covered.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna close the public hearing then at 5:41. Next item is public hearing on amending Chapter 100 subdivisions, specifically amending Chapter 100, Article 5, which is Streets, Section 100-113, Street Geometry Standards. We will open the public hearing at 5:41. Scott, do you have anything on this one?
I don't, and I'll be honest. I wasn't— this was the P&amp;Z meeting that I wasn't able to attend. It was the same night as our lecture series and then also a town hall that was called. And so, I attended the town hall that was put on by private citizens just to kind of hear what they had to say, and then I went to the lecture series. I did not attend this. Paul, were you there?
Yes, I was.
I know that we're adopting the national standards. We're trying to kind of follow that tact, but—
Pretty much, the— what's the agency, I forget what it's called, but the asphalt paving industry has set some updated standards, and we were pretty much just updating our standards to reflect those. Is that all right, Jim? Okay.
Those are ASHL?
Those, yes.
Yeah, so that's ASHL. That's the American Association for State Highways and Transportational Tickets.
Okay. So, basically, just accepting a better design.
One of the things that was brought to our attention through these, the folks that were here for three days last week, looking at redesigning the proposed cobblestone development, was that there are some other standards that we ought to look at that deal more with city streets and less with like the state standard for highways and that kind of thing. And typically, those streets are gonna be a little more narrow, they're gonna be a little more pedestrian-friendly, that sort of thing. And so, I don't—I don't know that any of this would change, frankly, because of the things it's dealing with. It's the— it's the crown and the cross slope.
Very minor vertical curvature geometry.
Right, curve radiuses and that kind of thing.
Well, I think it's prudent for us to go ahead and get these updated for right now, and then we'll continue to perfect as we go.
And that's all—I—that's all I kind of wanted to mention, is that we're gonna adopt this, but I think there are probably some other changes that may come as part of the UVO process.
That'll go into a different category of street design when our ordinances are—
Well, ultimately, we'll have—we'll have the street geometry for each different street type.
Exactly.
So, yeah. Okay, great. Then we will close the public hearing at 5:44. Next item is consider and take action on an ordinance amending Chapter 100 subdivisions, specifically amending Chapter 100, Article 5, Streets, Section 100-113, Street Geometry Standards. I believe that the recommended motion is to adopt the ordinance amending the code of ordinances, Section 100-113, Street Geometry, as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Perry, is that correct?
I initial, he's second.
Martinez was—
Sometimes his voice sounds like—
I'm a ventriloquist.
I think it bounces the sound off the mustache.
It's a little louder sometimes than I might be used to.
Nice. Okay, so the next item, I don't actually have a presentation. These are just— there's a bunch of updates on things that are coming on. We've got—I don't know that these are in order. So, we have Cooking for the Kids. This is previously Porkin' in the Park that the police put on, and it was a silly little play on words, and I thought that was quite clever. They— this is going to be now Cooking for the Kids. It's going to be put on by the Children's Home, and we will have—I think that you'll be able to find information on that on the website. It's October 21st and 22nd. It'll be business as normal. It'll be the same experience that you've had before, so please probably check the chamber's website. That's casterville.com/calender is where they've got their calendar.
And they got the flyers out at the different establishments, because we got one at the store.
Great. You guys are great about keeping that up over at Western Hardware and then at Magnolia Coffee Shop as well.
The beneficiary is not changing. It's always been that all the money, all the proceeds have always benefited this charity, and now it's the charity running it directly, which is a good—I think a good thing.
Yeah, I think so, too. The next item, Veterans' Day with Dream Flights. So, the American Legion Hall will be having the ceremony on the 11th, and then we'll have the parade and— and flights over at the airport on the 12th. Again, more information to come out on that. National Night Out is October 4th. They're gonna throw me out of an airplane?
With a parachute.
With a parachute?
Yeah, I was talking to your mom.
And a guide?
And a guy riding—
The plane goes beyond the ground or in the air.
Well, yeah, that's a good—that's a good point. I could do it by myself if it's—
I'll do it if it's on the ground. You haven't told us.
I told your mom and dad I'll be the medical response on the ground, because I'm experienced in that, so—
Well, they—I think I said this. They asked me at the Fourth of July thing, they're like, "Hey, we want you to jump out of a plane with us and go skydiving with us for National Night Out." I'm like, "Okay, but only if my mommy can come." So, my mom is jumping with me.
Oh, she's excited.
Oh, yes, she is. I'm not.
Your dad wished he could do it.
I know. I don't want to. I don't like doing that. My mom is much braver than me. And then we've got all kinds of things going on. Boobash, that's gonna be October 29th from 5:00 to 8:00. If anybody's interested, they still need trunks. I think we're gonna have a trunk, but my wife is one of the judges, so we can't win. So, we're gonna do it just for fun, but they definitely need trunks. Please get involved with that if you can. I'll talk about the Public Works Emergency Response. So, Scott and staff have been putting together basically an emergency response. I think that one of the problems that we've had during these emergencies is everybody's freaking out, and they're calling me, or they're calling council, or they're calling me, and then they're calling council, and then they're calling me again. So, they're putting together a response, both for action for the people that are out in the field, to make sure that they have the time to get out and actually get the stuff fixed, so they're not burdened with administrative updates, but also to get information out to the public. We're still working through that. We wanna make sure that it's very well thought out and that we continue to communicate better, especially with these widespread outages. They're incredibly impactful sometimes, and we wanna make sure that people know about it. I think it's kind of interesting that the salons now are keeping bottled water, not for drinking, but for rinsing out here for—
It's a smart thing. We have an old system that is unreliable at this stage.
And, yeah, we'll continue to get better. I mean, that's something that we are actually investing in, is continuing to improve it, but it doesn't happen overnight, so I appreciate the fact that you're looking out for the— Until we can actually get it repaired, which is a very long process, at least letting people know what's going on and keeping them up to date. I applaud you for the efforts, and again, I think that we've got a great start to this, and I look forward to continuing on with this, so thank you. The next item is just the Journey Forward Series recap. I'm not gonna go into a ton of detail about it. I went into way too much detail last night. I think I went over by double. So, it was a really—it has been the beginning of a very interesting journey. We heard from four different speakers. The first and the last purposely were city planners. The first was a city planner and an architect. The last was a city planner and a contract—or a developer. And so, we got a little bit different twist on each one, but still this kind of the same message.
Across the board.
Across the board, and that is—I think what we heard from all of them is, "Design your city to be people-centric and not car-centric. Design it to be friendly like we are, to design it so that it's easy to come together, and then you encourage that," instead of the way that cities are being built now that discourages that kind of thing by having long streets, by having everything car-centric, by having to play chicken to get across the road. Although that is appropriate here to play chicken to cross Highway Ninety. But it's been a really interesting—and the recap, the kind of the capstone that we had last night, we had great feedback. We're leaving out all of the drawings here in City Council chambers, so that if anybody has any questions about it, they can see. The really cool thing about this is that the developers—we invited the developers to this so that they could be a part of this. So, this was not just the community, but it was the developers as well. We had great response from them. They have—the first one said, "We have a certain amount that's been set in stone, but we're really interested in this." And so, they picked out the portions that they could and actually put it to the design team. There'll be more information coming out in the paper about some of that process, what that looks like, with some of the new images that they'll have out, so it was really positive. And other existing developers are jumping on that bandwagon and saying—I think I see the difference in here. I think how this is a great way that we can set ourselves above traditional, excuse me, conventional development that's happening in other big cities and a part of sprawl. So, very encouraged with that, looking forward to where that goes. We've got a big responsibility in front of us to make sure that it's implemented correctly, and that's gonna be, I think, our biggest challenge, but I think that we're up for it. So, that's a laugh. I talked a lot for not having these slides. I know. You gotta bring Kyle.
That's not bad at all.
Todd left, and he can't kick me anymore, and Harold's been way too kind. Next item is Council Liaison Board Reports. All right. Do you have anything you wanna go over that, or do we have questions?
The only comment I wanna make is, Harold called me earlier and said, "The—he—he's the liaison to the zoning board of adjustments, but not to the Joint Airport Zoning Board." I didn't know—
No, well, we don't really have liaison at the Joint Airport Zoning Board, because they're not an advisory board.
They don't. They're separate. They're not appointed by council in that, in the same way that advisory board is. So, anyway. But either way, if you have any questions about the Joint Airport Zoning Board, I have been going to those meetings. They have a meeting going on right now, actually, I think in 10 minutes, at the airport. So, I won't be at that one, but I've been at pretty much every other one.
All right, so do we have reports from anybody?
Yeah, hold it. I'm sorry.
Start over here.
Oh, I thought we were gonna go in the order of what's listed.
Oh, yeah, sure. Airport Advisory Board. Councilmember Stan.
All right, the Airport Advisory Board met September 12th. They received a report from manager David Kirkpatrick, discussions about National Night Out, Dream Flights, which the mayor covered here previously. They also discussed some board position assignments, which I think we have on tonight's agenda, so we'll be covering that later, and they set their next meeting for October 3rd.
All right, thank you. Historic Landmark Commission, Councilman King.
They had a meeting on last Thursday, September 22nd, and approved a couple of standard-type issues. One of them had to do with the Stuckon Bill, and one of them had to do with the sign. They also were some other discussions related to the— what the City Council wants back, related to some requests of them, but I think those are gonna come up at a future council meeting.
What are those requests?
One of them had to do with the fact that, you know, with this whole thing about the parks and the design of the parks, and the HLC will be involved in the review, but right now, for instance, HLC, they make decisions without bringing them back to it for a certificate of correctness. Those don't come back to council, so one of the questions they had, is that gonna be related to the park review also, or because those are such important citizen-related—the two parks, two historic parks, are— Could those go with like a regular certificate of correctness, or would those come back to council for final approval? That was one of the questions. And then there were some other kind of like legal questions and so forth, but Rihanna's actually putting that together and bringing it to us on a future agenda item, so I'm not gonna really present those at all, but just say that those are something that'll be come forward.
Okay, great. The Library Board Meeting?
Well, library was very— their summer program was very successful, as well as their food bank. They've received $10,000 in grants, $2,500 worth of books, and $8,000 for other items. The Junior Library Group gave funds so that they were able to go to conferences. They have been offered a lot more money in grants for like replacing the furniture and stuff like that, but the new furniture is—would overwhelm their location. So, once again, you know, if we can get them into a bigger space, that would be even more beneficial, and they could expand their programs, you know, over hand over feet, you know, and just—but they're—they did very well, very successful.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Next one would be Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Councilman Dyer?
The board met last Wednesday. The chairman was not there, so Marcus filled in for him. There was really nothing significant to report as far as actions, but there was a lot of discussion and a lot of consternation in the meeting around the subject of the RV park. So, that information has been passed on to the city administrator, and we're trying to work through it. He's trying to work through it.
Great. And what was the consternation about?
Well, generally speaking, some of you on the board may remember in fiscal year 2019, there was an action taken by the City Council to change the rules for the length of stay in the park.
To enforce the rules.
And to enforce the rules, and also to change the rate structure. And there was another part that the City Council acted on, which was to recommend to the city staff that they develop a capital improvement plan to start improving the interior of the RV park, to make it a more pleasant place, and make it more complimentary to the regional park. There did not appear to be anybody at the board meeting last Wednesday that was aware of that or cognizant of that, and it's very clear from what they said, and the administrator came in about halfway through the meeting, but most of this was said before he got there, that they don't agree. They don't seem to be in agreement with the guidance that was given, so we're gonna have to reconcile that.
Right.
So, it's gonna be—
Well, and that's—
It's gonna be taken up.
That's really good, and that's part of the reason for the liaisons, is making sure that we have that alignment, that we're giving them that guidance, so you're doing the absolute right thing in pursuing that and making sure that they knew what the council had willed, even if it was a past council, just to challenge that and encourage that communication.
And the other subject that they were upset about was they—when they learned that the City Council had passed the decision to heat the pool, they were very upset about that, because many members—I don't know exactly how many, but it's obvious that some of the members on the Parks Board— members on the Parks Board did not want the pool to be heated. So.
Well, that's one of those disconnects. I think we need to.
I explained to them the why and the wherefore, basically that it's because this year we issued a bond and we had money that we had to deal with. And it was in the CIP for many years. The city administrator had taken the initiative to bring it to the council and the council chose to act on it. So it's unfortunate that they feel like they were slighted.
And I can see where that happens. That's, that's one of the things that we've heard from some of the boards and commissions. Basically, if you don't listen to us, why are we here? And so I think that we owe it to them to listen. And I agree with them. I think that this is something that we should have coordinated with them because they are there to recommend on priorities. The fact that it is that it didn't happen like that and we're going to move forward with it, but that's where I really believe we need that close coordination with them so that we are aligning our actions with them. Part of the reason for the boards and the commissions is to help us do that outreach to the people that care about those areas so that they can help reach out to the people that they know that are concerned with them and help us set priorities. So they are definitely an advisory board, but if we don't listen to them on what their advice is, then I think that it's disrespectful to them to supersede what their recommendations are. But, you know, this is a growing experience and we will continue to get better at this. So I applaud your efforts and that kind of communication with them. And I think that it'll serve us really well.
Question. I know Devin attends that meeting too, and he always gives updates on plans and stuff that they're looking at doing with numerous parks. And shouldn't that been part of his heads up as well, since that falls under his purview?
He was the one who brought it up.
Oh, okay. All right.
Again, I think that we recognize where we have, we have opportunities for improvement. And that's just one of them. All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Carey, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission had a very brief meeting the night of the Journey Forward Assembly, and managed to get there on time. And we've already dealt with the product of that meeting.
Great. Thank you. And did we have anything from ZBA? ZBRA?
No, we did not have.
No, there was no, there was no meeting.
That's why it says no meeting here. All right. And I was gonna, I was gonna make some comments on the purpose, but I already covered that. I just think it's very important to, what Phil was asking about with the parks, there are things that we will drive as a council because we are looking at other, I think that we have even some more higher arching responsibilities. And so when it comes to things like heating the pool or improvements to Houston Square or to other areas, I think that we should definitely be including them in that, on that. We follow process as it's laid out in our ordinances, but I think it's a good thing to at least inform them, definitely coordinate with them wherever possible. So like with HLC, if we decide that we're going to do something in and around those areas, we include them with that process and let them know why we're doing it, what we're looking at, and make sure that we're aligned with them on that. All right. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on ordinance adopting the comprehensive fee schedule. And do we want to walk through this on, I think it's good if we just walk through the changes individually. Is that all right? I think we can run through them pretty quickly.
I got one question. Remember when we had the little carnival thing? And we were talking about the permit and how much they paid for the permit and everything? Have we updated that? Because for special events and that, I only see when it says on city property and ROW excluding regional park for the $100 instead of what they paid? Because you and I discussed about, talked about that.
I think it's the same, is it the sanctioned event permit of 20 bucks right there? Is that what that is? Yeah. So this is your opportunity to entertain a motion to change that, if you'd like. There are several changes that I'm going to recommend as we go through this from what has already been provided because there's some feedback I received from council in between when y'all were given this and now that we'll talk about. But yeah, that's where that is. It's actually on page one. So when we get to that, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. So we're on page one.
Yeah. Well, you wanted to go through the changes first. So the change, the changes, do you want me to walk through these?
Well, let's just, let's just do a page turn and then.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll do this at the same time as we're doing the changes?
Yeah. So do you want me to walk through these?
On the screen, do you?
What? I can.
For, I guess, for people.
Absolutely. Is that TV still on?
TV's on, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, I.
The password is showing a little bit.
Yeah. I don't know if you can see anything that happened. The stinking part is my mouse. So I'm gonna blow this up a little bit. Is that better?
Yep.
Yes. All right. So we're focusing on the changes. Copies and facts fees are staying the same. You'll see that there's a wholesale distributor with annual that went from $37.50 to $937.50. Apparently it's been at $37.50 for years, but this is the state fee. This is what the state charges. And it's $937.50. So it's been wrong for a number of years. We haven't ever not collected the right amount, but it was wrong on our table. So I thought that we, I thought it was a typo when I looked at it. And Leroy assured me that, no, we've actually been, just had it wrong for several years. We just now caught it.
Wow.
So these are all, that's all your.
Is there an administrative fee on top of that?
You know, I don't know.
No, I do the, the.
She does it for free.
Annual.
Should we just?
And they come in and pay and we just, it's a piece of paper.
Do we have wholesale distributors that have that license?
No.
Should we just round it up?
Yeah, I think that's part of the, well, you want to have.
And we can only charge a certain amount anyway.
Gotcha.
And it's everyone who has to stay out.
We haven't missed a news story.
So there's that one I was asking about.
All right. Yeah. So then there's this one. The sanctioned event permit. Now, it looks like this is, it, there is an ordinance reference, 2014-10. So we might need to bring that back for, that ordinance, the 2014-10 for a revision of some kind. But that's where that $20 is coming from.
How often do we charge that? How many sanctioned events do we have?
Well, if you're talking about carnivals, that's the first one I've written up in probably years. I mean, we just.
Just sanctioned events?
The only other carnival we've had is for a city event, and that was on the Fourth of July a few years ago.
Well, I know that like, it says on city property and ROW excluding regional parks. And when we have like a run or something of that nature, where do we charge them?
If it's on the, well.
I thought it was this hundred dollars.
There's a separate thing in the park deal for that, isn't there?
In the parks area? When we get to that, we can look at that. You may be right. I want to say it's a hundred bucks.
When you say carnival, which carnival are we talking about?
Like the one that showed up over here near Highway 90?
He was in Canada. He missed the whole.
Yeah. There was one next to the cemetery.
He missed the water out of it.
At the hill.
At the church.
Yeah, right there at the, the old church there. Yeah, they set up like overnight and everybody was like, what the heck?
Well, they came. They, they got the permit when the gentleman came in. And I think somebody probably.
I know the electric cords went across the street and so did the hose. So they don't have facilities there on the property.
I believe it was a benefit for the church to try to regroup. But the gentleman that came in with the parade, or I'm sorry, parade, the carnival did, they ended up getting their permit. But we just don't have.
If you have a carnival on private property like the church, do they still need to do this?
Yes, they.
So like every time St. Louis Festival at Hanny Kenny Park, they need a permit like this?
If they have a carnival come into town.
So this says about sanctioned event.
Well, our, there is a separate thing for carnivals. It may be under that sanctioned event. But under the carnival, the old ordinance in our code of ordinances, there is a section for carnival.
So we need to read what that ordinance.
And we'll bring that back as a separate agenda item.
Because, because I know they had problems. I know somebody got hurt out there. And then somebody got hurt.
How?
Out at the carnival thingy. And, you know, because part of the permit is, the pleady should have a plan, stuff like that. So.
And they weren't aware of the carnival and of course they were to look at it.
Yeah.
To watch it, for traffic and that type of thing. So, just.
Okay. So we'll revisit. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
We can afford strong carriages and park alcohol permit fee. So this is something else, yeah. Councilman King, when we talk about alcohol in the park at some point, there is apparently in our fee schedule, a, if you're going to allow park or alcohol in the park for listing to Life Force or something else, there's a separate fee that's supposed to be collected for that.
And that's for like a sanctioned event where we have to.
Previously, when they used to have Fia Rella Friday, they would come down, the group, at that time it was Gary Carter, the group for it, they would come down and pay a fee of $20 because they might walk across our park down there by the cafe. And so that was, that was for that. So.
And again, just, these are all council discretionary. So if there's any of these that you, and we don't have to make all the changes tonight, like if you want to reflect on some of these, you certainly can. But any of these are open for discussion by council if you want to make changes to them. So these are some other fees. I'm skipping through the ones that are changing.
The airport.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So.
I have a question on that, unless you're going to cover it.
No, I did supply, so this was the council direction last year was to defer to the airport manager. Part of it's just because the market changes, like right now, what we're seeing. Now granted, everything's full. And the brand new USDA hanger, I believe is 100% leased. It's not finished yet. They'll be moving in, I think, Saturday. So we're, it's almost finished. And we're going to fill it up just as quickly as possible. But the idea is that as the market changes, we don't have the set fee that's set one time a year. He's able to do that. So, but I did send out for all of your, you know, information, what the historical rates are and then what the rates are for this year. But you had a question?
Yeah. I know the city council's addressed this at the last budget and said that we were just going to let the airport manager set the rates by square foot. But I don't think this gives us enough information. I don't have a problem with the airport manager setting the rate because that's what the council voted on. But I'd like to see a list of hangers and the amount that he's going to charge.
Well, not in the comprehensive fee schedule. That defeats the purpose.
It's where it used to be.
But that defeats the purpose.
Right.
I can send it to you separately, like we did, like the other day. We can send it to you separately so you have it on an annual report. You know what's being charged. But putting it in the fee schedule is.
Why don't we just put the current rate in? Because I, I like the, the way that you're going with this is you want to provide visibility, transparency, and we'll have a rate at a specific time. So maybe in his, in his department report, he says current rate for hangers for different pieces of this.
Oh, we can do it in a monthly. I, again, don't have an issue providing the information in his monthly report, but in the comprehensive fee schedule.
No, it doesn't belong in the comprehensive.
You've made it, it's fixed. In my opinion, the way we're doing it, it is absolutely impossible for me as a council member to have a judgment about whether we're properly managing the hangers at the airport. I'm not trying to impugn the airport manager. He has the right to set the rate. But we can't see, we don't know what he does every year. We have no visibility. Nothing. It doesn't even say the amount per square foot up there.
Right.
We don't know if he changed it from last year, or if he changes it six times during the year. We don't know how much money he made.
Right. So would it suffice to put it in the monthly report?
No, that'd be fine.
I mean, it gives, it gives you the information. It shouldn't go in here because these are setting the fees.
So when you put it in the monthly report, you now put the onus on me to go through 12 times a year and calculate and figure out whether, in my opinion, we're leveraging the hangers. It's too difficult.
No, I think.
The way we used to do it, it was very clear.
I think, I think what you're looking for is something we can provide, which is, okay, are the revenues going up or down? Is the rate, is the lease rate going up or down? Are there empty, that's all information we can provide on a monthly basis that should give you as policymakers, all the information you need to know. Is the airport in a healthy situation or not? It's the same thing with the RV park, right? It's the same thing with anything else that the city manages. We as staff should be able to provide you a report that doesn't make you do all this work. I mean, if there's, that's where the back and forth on the reports comes in. Tell us what you want to see on it. We're more than happy to provide it. We have that information. We want you to know and be transparent about what's happening. How healthy are we as a park, as a airport, as a library? Like each of the services the city provides, you know, on a monthly basis, you should have the information in the format that appeals to you, that helps you as a policymaker make good decisions. And that's our goal.
Is he changing, is he changing the rate per square foot every month? Or is he changing it every six months?
The leases are.
Or is he changing it every minute? I mean, we don't have any idea.
The leases are on an annual basis. So every person renews their lease every year. So when they renew, when their renewal is up, that's when the rate is set with that person at the market rate at that time. Now generally, the market rate, we set it once a year. Like it is, we, basically the way we used to be doing it. But the idea is we now have the flexibility that should something stay empty for a long time, which was the case in the past. We had issues with hangers that stayed empty and there wasn't the ability for the airport manager to do anything really about it because the rate that was in the comprehensive fee schedule was, was too high. And he didn't have any, he didn't have the autonomy to be able to manage it the way that you would expect an apartment manager or anybody else that's managing market rate rentals to do. So that's what this was intended to do. But I, I agree with you. Like you need to know what it is and we're more than happy to provide it. I think the place to provide that though, is in the monthly report. And we will, I'll work with David to give that to you in a format that appeals to you. And if it doesn't, just tell me. Say, hey, this isn't what I was looking for. I'd like to see it like this. We're happy to do that as much as we need to. We want, we want to tweak those reports.
I think we can provide a good graph that gives you basically a 12-month look back, current state, 12-month look back, occupancy rate, when leases are coming up. So I think that we can actually provide that pretty well. And I think that's going to give us a much clearer picture than just setting the rate in the comprehensive fee schedule.
Agreed.
Are you all right?
No, but that's okay.
Well, let's take a step.
I'm obviously just one that agrees. I have a different view than everybody else. But I feel like my job is to trust but verify.
Yep.
I can't verify anything.
Right. Well, we need the same.
And I don't feel comfortable with it.
I really think that we need the same level of detail on all of the rest of them. I know that Devin's been working on providing clearer pictures on this. So I, I agree with you. I think that it's very prudent, especially to have graphs that can demonstrate this.
Did I, did what I share with you, I mean, this is what was shared.
Yes, you sent me the.
Right. But, I mean, I personally, I think this gives you all the information you need from my fantasy. But I need to know from you, you know, does it or does it not? This has, so it's got all of your hanger numbers, left-hand column, all the years, 2014 to, you know, current, 2023 proposed. It tells you the percentage that was increased in each year, right? I mean, it's giving you the historical data. I think it shows you if it was empty in the past or not. And that should also help you understand why these changes were needed. Because we had some empty hangers for a long time. Now, there's no empties. That's a good, I mean, I think that's a sign.
They were empty because they were damaged.
Maybe.
Yes, that's what, the only reason they were empty. They were damaged. Because we've had full occupancy for years.
Okay.
With a 58-number waiting list. We've never had a problem filling every hanger that I know of, except when the hanger could not be rented because it was damaged. And, and see, that's why I believe we've made this so complicated now that it's going to be almost impossible.
I just disagree. It's not complicated at all.
Okay, but that's, all right, I'll just stop.
So was it commercial one that was not, that was damaged? Probably.
I honestly remember the exact hanger that was damaged.
I think that's the one that.
We had two hangers that were damaged.
Dream flights. This one, Dream Flights, that's the one that was damaged. I think that's commercial one. All right. Moving on.
Can we, on your list there, have what businesses are occupying which hanger out there? That way we know where to tie them to when their leases renew?
Sure. I can give you whatever.
That column.
Yeah.
Just the current lease.
Yeah.
Is that something you, is it where we can get to, or are you going to send it to?
Yeah. The reason that on this issue, when you look at, we'll probably just have to add a different table. Because if you add it here, the less order changes, right? Who's leasing it changes. And we want to be able to give you historical data that's relative. So we'll probably have to provide you a current lease, like breakout, but I'm pretty sure he tracks it that way already. But I'd like to, I'm going to work with the mayor on putting together something that you can, that goes in the monthly report that provides you that kind of information. Which leases are up? Which numbers? That kind of thing. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because they vary, they vary on dates. Each one of them go up in October. But there's so many different ones that we have on resign.
Yeah, I really think that, I don't think it's going to be that hard to, it's going to be hard to set up. But I don't think it's going to be, I mean, it's just complicated getting that through. We can discuss. that through, we can discuss afterward if that's what he thinks. Okay.
Backing up to the early contractual thing, that we have ordinance that talks about twenty, twenty dollars for the first three days, and fifteen dollars after the first three days, but our fee schedule only has twenty, we don't need to worry about that.
Well, we're gonna come back and look at the ordinance itself and the fee along with it, we set this once, we can go back and modify the fees as we're digging through this, right?
Sounds good.
The short answer is no, because they're both adopted by ordinance, it depends on how the adoption language works, but...
Yeah, because there's other things, it says here that if it's church-sponsored, you don't charge the fee, but, so you could come back and require you to charge the fee, but it's automatic, you don't charge.
That was church-sponsored, wasn't it?
Not exactly.
Not exactly?
No, it wouldn't recharge.
They didn't advertise it like that?
No.
Right, okay. All right, so consultant fees, we had a five percent adder, we've increased that to ten percent, part of this is just in recognition of the increased amount of work that staff is gonna be doing, as we have increased amount of development that's headed our way, so we're trying to get in front of that on the permitting side, so these are fees that generally the builders or developers would be paying, so that's legal and consultant, and when we talk later about the use of a consultant to do plan review, that would come out of this fee, right? That would come out of this section of the code, or the comprehensive fee schedule.
Okay.
So again, a lot of changes to the zoning, and you'll see most of these are increases, this is all related to plat filings, you have new development.
And then you crossed off the future land use plan, because it's, it's a part of the development agreement?
Correct, well, and because you have planned unit development down here.
Yep.
And that's five hundred dollars plus twenty-five dollars per acre, and you had future land use plan, so there was a little bit of redundancy right there, so we're trying to get rid of some of that.
We used to have a minor and major subdivision category, and I see the, I don't see the...
Well, we have a minor amending?
Well, a minor amending, yeah.
I don't think there was a subdivision.
This is, this is by acre, so that kinda deals with the size, if the larger it is, the more they pay.
Yeah, that's planning unit development, but generally, we used to have, basically if it was four lots or more, it was considered a major subdivision.
Well, let me see if that's somewhere else.
I don't believe it is.
It'd have to be some years back before last year, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, been years, yeah, I've got another one too, when they're done, well, we'll...
Yeah, I was looking to see if it's on here, but it's not, okay, so you're saying, one of the things we need to do is track the changes that are being proposed, because at the end, we wanna be able to adopt the comprehensive fee schedule with the changes as discussed, right? So what's the, what's the specific change?
Well, you have planned unit development, which is a very distinct animal, and you've got minor, minor amending plots, but there's no distinction between, say, a, there's, well, if there's no major plot, there's no real definition for a minor plot, I'm just not seeing a distinction there, it's like having an A without a B.
So these are single and two-family residential, so if it's bigger than that, it'd be a major?
Well, if it were, yeah, but it could be single and two-family residential with twelve lots, or four lots, and I just don't know where that cutoff is for the minor.
I believe it's four lots, if I'm not mistaken, because if it's over four, it comes to the planning, it can be minor, and it can be done in-house.
I think that's correct.
Okay, so as long as the ordinance remains that way, that distinction, I guess, does not need to be in the fee schedule.
Maybe we could, maybe we could put a, like, in parentheses.
All others.
Four lots and smaller, as, that way people...
For, for the minor.
For the minor.
But that's in, that's in our ordinance, our subdivision ordinance.
Yes, it's in our ordinance.
See where it says all other zoning districts, what does that mean?
Single, two-family, so if it was a business or a commercial lot, it'd be different than a residential lot.
Okay.
You can see that the prices are pretty similar, like, even in the minor, it's two-hundred plus twenty, or two-hundred plus twenty-five per acre, right? And eight-hundred plus twenty per lot, or eight-hundred plus twenty-five per acre.
So that's for anything above the minor subdivision defined by four lots or fewer in the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
So maybe adding a definition for minor, it is in our, in our...
It is in the ordinance.
Ordinance, but...
Yeah, like, said in parentheses, you know, four lots or smaller.
I have this. On the next page. It doesn't look like it's a change, and I did not realize that we were charging...
This one?
I was going up to the top, that we were charging one hundred dollars for a construction permit under, under two thousand dollars, so if somebody's spending seven hundred dollars on materials for a carport, they're gonna pay a two, a one hundred dollar application fee for a permit? That's a fifteen percent charge?
It, you know, the other thing to do is to look at, because I believe, I need to find out whether or not we're doing those inspections in-house, or if those are, like, Bureau Veritas, if it's a site-built construction, even if it's small, like, they're gonna build a little shed, if it has to be inspected, but we're paying Bureau Veritas, and that hundred dollars might be the minimum charge, I just verify that.
That is an outgoing fee, okay.
Right.
But also, like...
But I don't know if we're doing that in-house or not, I don't think we are.
But also, if it's seven, like, four hundred, four hundred square feet, you don't need a building permit, so you wouldn't...
Right.
So anything that's gonna be over four square feet is gonna be, or it's at eight-hundred square feet?
No, it's smaller than that, it's more like two-fifty.
Yeah.
If it's bigger than a single carport, it's gonna...
I think it's two-hundred forty, two-fifty.
Be careful if you get advice from Phil, whether you need a permit.
Hey, I know I didn't need one for the playhouse, but it was only twenty feet.
But this is on the value, this isn't on the square footage.
The permit, the page doesn't, on the next page, when you go further down, it doesn't specify how long the permit's good for, and it doesn't have a cost if a person wants to come in and extend their permit, because maybe they ran out of money, and they're gonna need a little more time, so...
I need to verify that, that's in the ordinance, though, I think that's in the ordinance.
Shouldn't it be on here, for the fee for extending it?
I don't know, because, well...
You lose the ordinance.
Because if your fee expires, if your permit expires, then you have to get a new permit.
Well, that's the thing, is I don't think that the fee is different, and I think in the ordinance, I'll, I need to verify all this, but I think the ordinance says, when it expires, you have to get a new permit, it doesn't say, I mean, extension, if you're right...
Oh, yeah, here you go, it's right here.
What page?
It is the second page, extension of time and postponement.
Second page of...
The second page of the document.
Let's go to the top.
That one.
This one?
That one.
I don't see it.
Extension of time, fee may be waived by the city administrator, if the extension is required prior to any approval expiring and subject to the application.
Two, five, three.
Providing cause for the extension. Sure.
Okay.
And then we're on sign permits.
Now I'm wondering, there's a contradiction between that and what our other ordinance states, if I have to look that up. Can I go right through this?
Go back up?
Yeah.
Right there?
There, yep. The sign permit based on construction valuation, right?
And it won't distinguish between waived hiring or permanent, it's just, it's all based on cost of construction.
Okay. Any question on that?
No. Actually, there's a lot of rate based on cost of construction.
Yeah, so what is, is that in the ordinance?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, I'm wondering if it's not this, if it's, if your sign is...
Okay.
Less than a hundred bucks, then, or less than two thousand dollars, and it's a hundred dollar fee.
I hope it's not over a million dollars.
But we've had some fairly expensive signs put in recently.
But not over a million.
It says construction valuation.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be this fee, because it's based on construction valuation.
Okay.
Okay. So no changes there.
You had an addition on that last one, you just said if the project is over ten thousand, and it's not associated with a building permit, then the fee's based on the valuation? How would that be? How would they have something over ten thousand dollars that was not based on a building I assume that was put in there for a reason, I just don't understand.
Yeah, I, well, like, my immediate thought is like a sign, like, you could have an expensive sign, which we've had, which is over ten thousand dollars.
But you have to have a building permit for it.
You have to have a sign permit.
Yeah, it's a sign permit, but that would not be a building permit, it'd just be a sign permit.
Putting up a fence, like, some people are putting up these...
We have a fence fee.
Okay, all right, no, that makes sense.
A pool, does a pool qualify?
Pool requires a permit.
I know, but it doesn't have a building and permit associated with it, so a pool would...
You sure?
A pool, you gotta have a pool, a permit to put a pool in.
Right, I know that, but is it a building, that's what I'm saying, is it a...
A permanent permit, because the city inspects them.
Anyway, I was just trying to answer the mayor's question, I don't know.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So these are the library fines.
And it looks like you're just cleaning these up based on experience of...
Yeah, people who come in and try to nitpick and say, you didn't say that specifically, well, now we're trying to say it specifically.
Clearing up any gray.
So the meeting room fee for nonprofit was free of charge, is there a meeting room fee?
Uh, I thought we deleted, I thought there's no meeting room.
There's no, yes.
There was a meeting room, but it's been...
Used, transformed, absorbed.
It's where we do some of our team activities and stuff.
Okay.
Final records.
So, yeah, we don't have soccer fields at Lions Park anymore, so those have been deleted. Rather than calling them soccer fields at the regional park, we're just calling it athletic fields, because we have football there, we have soccer there, we have multiple groups. And we are now going, this is kind of a big change, we were doing like a three thousand dollar per field fee per season, and it was under contract, we still have the contracts in place, but we're moving to a twenty dollar per participant fee, and that's misspelled, I see. The twenty dollars per participant, that's pretty much what the football team has been paying, is what I understand, the football group, but this is new for soccer, and one of the issues is, we've had a significant increase in usage, and, you know, it's not just the kids, obviously, each kid represents one or two adults, sometimes more if it's a game, and everybody's coming to cheer them on, and we want activity at the, at the park, obviously, the idea is to drive folks there, but there is a significant impact to the park itself in terms of quality, whether it's the restrooms, or the fields, or what have you, and so the intent of this increase is to address those issues, and hopefully be able to maintain the quality, but honestly, it's, we're, it's a good and a bad thing, there's, our fields are very, very popular, getting used, you know, love that, but maintaining the quality of fields is becoming a greater and greater challenge.
The estimate of participants in the soccer...
Let's see, it's like eight or nine hundred.
Which has increased dramatically over the last few years, I mean, it was, it was a problem a few years ago, remember you guys were dealing with...
It's really an equity issue, trying, I mean, they're really struggling with this down the advisory board, they spend many, many hours talking about it, and what they're trying to do is make it equitable between the different sports.
Right.
Because there was such a variance previously, and they're trying to find a way to level the field, but the point is, you gotta take care of the field, and you gotta take care of the restrooms, and the density of people in the sports varies, so the effort varies, so they're trying to find a way to make an equitable price.
That makes sense.
And I, because you and I talked about this, but this has gone through the parks board, so they've agreed with all these changes.
Yep.
What about baseball fields? I didn't see them listed.
Are we talking about out at the airport?
Mm-hmm.
It's a little bit separate, because we don't maintain those fields, so they're, so as far as the city's involvement, that we already have an exclusive three-year contract.
Okay.
So they're, that's kinda covered.
Okay.
And by exclusive, meaning they, no one else gets to use it.
Yeah.
They're exclusively their, their use.
Okay, I was just...
Yeah, yeah.
Asking a question.
Yep, and I don't know that, do we have a, do we have a signed contract? I don't, I don't know if we ever...
Ever since?
I did, oh, I know, but I don't know if we ever got a signed contract.
We do not have one.
We do not have one, that's the problem.
Because I know there's a lot, well, I know there's a lot of back and forth, they had a change in presidency, and they had another change in presidency, and we met multiple times over the, over the contract terms, and finally agreed what those were gonna be, but I don't think I have a signed contract.
You were gonna shorten it to a three-year contract from a five-year contract?
Yeah, no, and all of that's been agreed to, just me and the current president, I just don't have a signed contract.
No, we're gonna get that done.
And I've, you know, we've...
When is our season over?
Passed multiple times, I believe, I don't know.
Say this in jest, if we say that we're gonna charge a twenty dollars a participant, I'll bet they'll call you tomorrow.
Well, we don't have a signed contract.
It reversed this.
I said that in jest.
Phil, that was good knowing you. I'm gonna miss you. Okay.
All right. And then the volleyball court, you had mentioned on that?
I didn't mention it, but we're...
Oh, you did.
What's that?
You did it earlier.
We're trying to be consistent with the cost for the different types of fields.
RDs, I know we've had some feedback about this, the daily rate is being reduced from forty-five to forty dollars, concern was, why are we reducing it? And in part, it's because we, we're, on a trial basis, wanna see if we get more usage, that's debatable, but the other reason is because we have an RV park in close proximity out of the golf course that charges forty-five dollars for their rate, and they're way nicer than ours, and so we feel like, from a market standpoint, we shouldn't be charging the same amount, maybe if we charge a little bit less, we're using, but that's debatable.
I feel very strongly on this one, because we really went through a great deal of effort to change an eighty-five thousand dollar a year loss into an eighty-five thousand dollar a year gain, and we were subsidizing a lot of people in the old park rates, and this to me is a step backwards, forty-five dollars is not an unreasonable rate for a daily rate, it's pretty common, and I don't see any reason why we should start going backwards, I think it's a mistake, that's all I'll say.
Well, maybe that's something that we freeze on for now, and, and actually look at the evaluation for it, I think that, go ahead.
Here we're talking about Ken Campbell.
No.
No.
RV, yeah, it's a little...
It's just spacing time.
He's spaced it for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I would also, I would say we leave it at forty-five, I, I don't think changing it five dollars is gonna affect one way or the other, we have something the other parks don't have, we have the river, and I think there's value to that, and I think when someone lets it go in, and pointed at one of these neighboring park competitors out there, they're, they don't have this big park next to them, and I think that park has value, so...
They have a golf course. They have a golf course.
Yeah.
They have a golf course.
Well, but they can't help, believe it or not, it's a market.
Well, no, the daily rate is $45.
It's a golf course.
What's our, what is our occupancy right now, our occupancy percentage?
Well, that's the thing, is I think, I don't know off the top of my head, but I, one thing to know is that this is small, it's a small part of our, the, most of the revenue comes to the monthly fees, and I really don't care if you leave it at 40 or 45, this is a, this was a recommendation from your RV manager, park manager.
It's $45 for the smallest, the smallest pad against the road, which is the most undesirable pad in the park, because you get road noise. If, I, my RV, I need a 75-foot pad, the cheapest one I can get out there is $65 a day, maybe 75. I mean, this is a reasonable rate.
Okay.
And I don't see, I mean, I just can't see going backwards.
But Scott also, those, we're talking about Alsatian Oaks, those are $100 sites plus, those are expensive, now, the one of 471 might be $40 or $45, but I can't believe Alsatian Oaks, those things are-
You mean the golf course?
The golf course ones there are extremely expensive.
Yeah, sorry.
That's what he's talking about, the park behind the golf course.
Yeah, but those aren't 45.
The ones, the small pads where you have to back your trailer in along the road, those are the lowest-priced ones, because they're undesirable and there are a lot of road noise, and they're very small.
The other thing is, is dump station fee at the bottom, that was asked of me, I always remember putting that in there six years ago, and everybody agreed, residents are already paying, and, and that was something asked of me, that's the only thing that's ever been asked of me, a constituent, I know exactly where the house is, if they ask that, but it's not so much a $15 fee, you gotta go and pay the fee, and it's just a big asshole. And they're already paying sewage here in town, so, yeah, you know, what it said in the passage, if you show your current utility bill, then you don't have to pay the fee, you just, and, you know, that's, we asked me some years ago, and I said, we talked to city council, and they agreed with that. So, I would say, I don't think we should remove, to, to non-residents, it's free, I think dump, dump station, non-resident use is 15, and for residents, it's free, or just don't even have to say it's like a part of that.
Sorry. Yeah.
I thought you were trying to get to it.
No, I'm writing on my, my computer. Okay, well, so, when there's a motion made, I've made, I'm making notes of the various feedback we're receiving, I will clarify these points, and then you all can determine when you vote, which of the amendments you want to support, okay?
Well, was there another, was there another one that we had a question on?
Yeah, the, I don't know what page it is, it's page 34 of the whole packet, but Helen Delavan brought up the entry fees.
No, that's not, that's not on here, though.
That's not in this.
Yeah, no, that's, that's future.
No, yeah.
We haven't gotten to that point yet, okay. So, up to this point, the, the only ones that we're questioning are the daily rate on the RV and the dump station for residents.
Correct, that's the only two notes I have, so.
Okay, cool, I got that marked down.
And, well, add a definition for minor plaid. That's a, that's, I think that's a tax change, and it's not, you know, that's what the attorney would say, doesn't-
Right. Okay. This is just the refundable payment fee deposit going down to 25, that's fine?
So, these were removed, that's why they're, they're stricken. At one point, in the first draft of this, we were, we were striking all of this, and part of that was because we weren't necessarily following this, we weren't doing $10 per car, sometimes we were charging per head, sometimes we were charging per car, depending on the event. So, what is, in blue is what is being recommended, and this is only applicable to special holidays fees, so we heard Mrs. Delavan speak earlier this evening, and that was not in reference to this, I know, I've heard her tell me directly that she didn't have an issue with charging for seasonal, it's the, it's the concept that we would close the park somehow with a gate, and charge a gate entrance, you know, every day, to people who are non-residents, and she, you heard her opinion about that earlier this evening, but I just want to clarify that she wasn't talking about this. So, season, the special holiday fees, what staff is proposing is either, or both, $5 per person per day, or $10 per car, and that would be set by the various event committees for their event, they would determine, well, we're gonna do it per car, per, per person.
We should have, we should have both, because some people don't drive and they're walking.
Right.
So, the intent of this is, is like, for instance, 4th of July, to walk into the park, we charge people $10, to walk in.
No, I think, if they want to charge a fee, again, I, I'm gonna, something I said earlier, or I was explaining to someone else, if, I, I think it should be discretion of staff to waive a fee or reduce a fee, yeah, at, at our discretion, and that's, that would be based on market, it'd be based on input from the, from the community, it'd be based on a lot of different things, right, complaints, what have you, and to notify council when that's being done, but, but I don't want to, like, we may or may not charge a fee on Memorial Day, this just gives you the option to do it, does that make sense?
Well, and I think the intent with the per person was because we had people that were dropping people off, going back and picking them up, dropping them off, I don't think it's the people that are there that are walking, like, the residents, local residents, paying that extra, it's really for just the additional traffic coming through, so.
So, at the last 4th of July, which we weren't at, everybody who went in there, they had an armed van that cost $5, or would only charge you?
I don't think so.
No, we didn't charge for anything.
Yeah, I don't think anything, I think the whole 4th of July event was free. That's what I'm saying, I, I-
Because I don't know how you would charge $5 a person, because there's so many, like Helen said, there's so many entrances to the place.
Well, there's only one entrance to the place, and when people come in the car, you give them a strap, so they pay $10 for the car, if there's more than two people in the car, then you do it by the, I think it's easier to-
It just kind of leaves it up to the discretion of the event committee, because it, because you do have to have a significant number of volunteers and other, you know, staff to enforce when you're gonna charge, but one of the other reasons to do this is, I know we've had, we've had groups step forward and say that they could, talked about doing a big event of some kind, and actually, to the extent where we, they would get additional fencing and do some other things, so that they could charge for the event, so that they could recoup, you know, the cost of the van and that kind of thing. Anyway, I, this, the concept is, this just gives us that opportunity.
The other concern I have about it is that you have somebody standing at the street corner with hundreds of dollars in their pocket, and become a target. If you've got somebody collecting fives and tens at the-
Oh, yeah, yeah, but that's, security is always, yeah, security is always an issue when you get out there.
You know, for instance, Easter weekend is very typical because of the magnitude that we were charging $10 per car, for every car that drove in, because they were just using it for camping, so that was pretty strange. The way this is written, and, and some people said, "No, I don't want to drive in, I'm gonna park by the tennis courts, I'm just gonna walk in, because we're not gonna use those."
Well, there is a separate, we recognize the pavilion fees, and I believe there's a separate cost, a separate seasonal fee rate for that stuff, right?
Well, no, this is for people just to go into the park on Easter.
Right.
It was because of the number of people that went in there on Easter.
Right.
We charged $10 a car, and you had a person up there that collected $10 a car.
Right.
So, I guess the thought is, is that you all are thinking that, well, we're gonna charge $10 a car or $5 a person. And if that's the case, is it only the people who are in the car, but if someone were just walking their dogs around the park on Easter, they would also have to pay it, or because they're walking, they don't have to pay it? That's why I'm kind of wondering what the fee structure is.
Question for you, should we potentially approve this as they've got it, and then dig into this more about the actual functionality another time? Because I don't think that we have all the answers on this right now.
If we can change it in the future.
Yeah, I mean, you can change it anytime.
Or have it on the permit, what, that they have to do, that has a line that says, you know, charging per, you know, or if they decide to charge per person or by vehicle.
Well, these aren't a permit, this is just as you would know where they are.
When the event, though, because they keep-
There is no event on Easter.
Not currently, but there could be, and I think what Sheena is saying is, if the person were to, like, the example I used, wanted to throw a big event, on their event, then, you know, permit that they got with the city, they would, they would name that. I just wanted to, the, the reason that we, we were gonna remove this altogether, and then just say, committees, you do what you want. But my pro, my thought process on that was, legally, the city, the whole reason we have comprehensive fee schedule is, you really can't charge a fee that hasn't been adopted by ordinance, you're not supposed to. Now, whether you do it and no one catches you or says anything is one thing, but that's why these were put back in there, is because we can't charge it unless it's in here, but, but if we decide not to charge it, then that's to the discretion of that committee, right? That's the concept.
The word discretionary.
Yeah, like, working in the park is an event.
No, it's cooking for kids now.
Whatever, that's an event being held at the park. They had to have a permit, correct?
Yes.
So, you know, they could, it put a line in there of whether or not they elect to charge an entrance fee, and if they do elect, you know, what their option is, what, what option they choose.
Does this mean that a walker, a person who just wants to walk around the track-
That's what Phil was just asking.
Yeah.
If it's on a holiday, I don't know, but, you know, go ahead.
I would suggest we leave it like it was, and send it back to the parks board and look at this, because I don't think they've actually looked at this, this was not discussed accordingly, correct, Herb?
This was not discussed at the last-
Well, can I, can I suggest that if we leave it the way it was, listing the holidays, Easter weekend, 4th of July, Memorial Day, Labor Day, I would still suggest that we do $10 per car per day or $5 per person.
Can we change it in the future, though, also?
Yeah, but if you're gonna adopt it tonight.
Yeah, I, I really think that we need to adopt it just like this, it gives them the option, which may not change it, I don't think that anybody's gonna do it inappropriately. I think more often than not, they're gonna waive the fee, that's been historical, and I don't think that we're looking at, I honestly don't think that we're looking-
I guess I'd be a little sensitive in the fact that we're adopting something the parks board didn't look at, so maybe we can leave it like it is, and then have the parks board-
Well, they, but what they did look at was just striking it, and giving them permission you were, they didn't-
The final study never saw this, it was never discussed.
Okay, I don't, not aware of that.
All right, skip over.
Good point.
What it, what it does depressingly says, it presented, it opens it up to other events other than those four holidays as well.
So, you're leaving, you want to leave the special holiday fees as is, is that the-
As is.
Until the park board?
For use. Yeah, he was surprised when I talked about this on another issue, but they did say they let it-
Well, he is senile, so.
I was a joke, just kidding.
I said he is senile.
What'd you say?
I said he is senile, but are, are you messing with me now?
He was on vacation.
He's senile and Phil's hard of hearing. It's all good. Who knows what the truth is? No, it's not, that's not an issue, all right. Swim camp, we don't have one, so that's being removed.
Actually, let's go back to that one, because what you had-
For swimming?
Yeah, under the swimming pool fees, what, what Scott was recommending was-
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Herbert reminded him that we need to set up a separate charge for the fall schedule, so that the typical season is spring and summer is the typical season, and then this would open up the fall, which would be October 1st to January 31st. So, and what you had mentioned was, do we need, does this, should this go in front of the parks board as well?
It, it can, my concern is, we're, we're up on top, the issue with this specifically is, October 1st is Saturday, and so these fees would go into effect October 1st, so if you wait until the parks board, you're not gonna be, you're gonna be, what do you charge for heating, the, the pool heating? So, the, the recommendation from staff is to go from $5 to $8 in the fall. Now, granted, the swimmers make up the smallest amount of, of the, basically, it's the fitness swimmers and others that use it, they make the smallest amount of the revenue that we will receive, but most of the revenue will more than likely come from the school district and the dive team, and theirs would be, we, we would charge them, though, at a rate of $8 per swimmer, and if they wanted to pay a group rate, they would get a discount for the group rate, just like we do during, like, season pass and the regular season.
But none of that's inherent yet.
No, that's why-
But the other thing is, is the pool heated right now?
It will be within the next week and a half, I think, it's, it's-
Plan is that it's not October 1st, but October 10th.
But before the next-
Near future.
Parks board meeting, yeah, very possible.
So, there needs to be some additional discussion, and we're probably, are we planning to have lifeguards out there and everything, eight hours a day, or four hours a day, or nine hours a day, or?
No, there's gonna be, no, there'll be special hours established just for the, the fall season, and some of that's still being worked out with the school district as far as when they're gonna use it, and the dive team, they're gonna use it, but, yeah.
Well, let's set up-
The proposal was eight bucks, you know, we're $5 during the summer, the spring and summer, $8 during the fall, and then a similar discount to what we do, the same kind of discount we do during the summer, we do during the fall.
But I don't think that that's ever been voted on by the board.
Oh, I know it hasn't, because I, honestly, Herb, this wasn't something that occurred to staff until you brought it to my attention, I was like, oh, yeah, we need to look at that. And one of the things we did do is call a number of other pools that heat, not just in our immediate area, but, you know, we went as far as Houston to talk to folks to see what they do, and what we learned is that everybody does it differently, so, if, there's not a standard, like, solution.
So, perhaps what we should do is go ahead and adopt the higher rate of three, it's an extra $3 for the daily-
For the fall season.
And then the, the 10 punch card for $70 for the, the pool pass, instead of a, an extended, so, he said, well, he brought this down for me, so it's eight, it's $3 extra per day for each one of the daily admission rates, and then a 10 punch card, which would be for any of these, for $70.
So, you get a dollar discount if you buy 10 of those updates, basically.
So, let's, let's include that in this adoption, it goes back in front of the parks board, and then we'll reevaluate it based on what they say.
I can support that.
Does that work? Okay.
Sorry, and there is no swim camp.
Okay, Harold, you lost your thought.
Here you go.
We added this, for monthly utility rates, electric, gas, water, sewer, see, adopt the ordinance 2022-03, just to kind of clarify why that's not in here. I did send out a memo to the council about the kiosk, the, the brand-new kiosk, Councilman King and I spoke about this last week, the, I've received some feedback about the rate, you know, if you pay by credit card, obviously, checks are free, cash is free, there are debit fines and fees are set by state, by the state, which won't be reduced, but if you pay your utility bill by credit card, it charges $3 per 99. So, like, let's say your bill is $330, you put it on your credit card, well, that $330 bill is gonna cost you $12, because it's $3 for the first 100, second 100, third 100, and then $3 for that 30 bucks, basically. I've talked to the kiosk provider, they've agreed to lower their rate to a flat 2.5%, which is in line with our other credit card processing fees that the city pays if you come in directly and pay, or if you pay online. But the, the discussion that Councilman King and I had was whether or not we wanted to waive those fees as a city, and wa, if they go to the kiosk, and the concept is, we want people to use the kiosk, we don't want them to come up and have a reason not to use it, and the cost is minimal.
It's a risk of saving us money, yeah.
Yes, and there's gonna be a lot of people, especially with the way inflation is, it's gonna be like, well, wait a minute, you know, if I turn my stuff in to a person, I don't get charged a fee, and here you're wanting me to go to a kiosk and pay, and now I'm gonna have to tack on additional costs that, hey, I could have gotten more grow trees or what have you, so I-
I also discovered it doesn't accept business-sized checks.
Yeah, I don't know, it's supposed to accept, I mean, it's gotta be a pretty good, I, so I have to go and pull the checks this week while Leroy's out, and, you know, the biggest check I found was one of those, it was not a standard-sized check, it was a pretty good-sized check, so the guy said it's supposed to check, it's set, it's supposed to receive business-sized checks, so I'd have to see the size of that check, like, how big it was.
It's a standard, standard letter-sized envelope check, but, but the slot was tuned out, I mean, it's through.
You're right, bring your scissors.
Cut, cut all the numbers off.
Yeah.
One thing I was very surprised to learn, I was talking to the lady that normally accepts these payments.
April?
Is that her name? I don't, I don't know her name, but she said to me, "Mr. Dyer, you'd be appalled if you knew how many people come in here to pay the utility bill by check, and I have to write their check for them, because they don't know how to do it, and they just sign it." So, they can't use the kiosk.
Right, well, the cons, the, the concept is, I'd like them to go into the library, I'd like them to go, rather than coming here to get that assistance, I, I want them to go in the library, because maybe the library can help them with some of their other issues, right? I mean, I'm not trying to, but really and truly, that's the concept, is, we want to drive people, one, they may not even be aware of all the things the library has to offer, so this is an opportunity for the library to step up, and it's also, the amount of time that it takes to, to help someone with that is, is pretty limited, it's pretty minimal. So, the distraction from the normal duties of the librarian is minimal, yes, you have to walk outside, yes, you got, I mean, you gotta spend some time with that patron, but that's now a patron, and they should be upselling them while they're there, you know, what do you know about the library, do you have a card, where do you live, let me get that stuff, so, yeah. live? Let me get that stuff. So, yeah. So that is not in this, you know, it's, it's not in the comprehensive fee schedule, but one of the things that I'm adding to the motion is the recommendation from staff to waive the credit card processing fee at the kiosk for utility payments. Because you can make, you know, credit card payments for the, for the court and other things, those will not be waived. I want to be clear.
We can't pay online with a credit card.
You can.
Do they, but we also are charging that fee also?
Yes.
Yeah, that doesn't go away. Currently, if you come and pay in person with a credit card, there's a two and a half percent processing fee. That stays. If you pay online, there's, there's a dollar 50 convenience fee and a two and a half percent processing, processing. And part of that is, again, I'd rather you go to the kiosk. Because the kiosk, once you go to the kiosk, it actually records your cell number. It'll, it'll give you options to put in your contact information. So the next time your bill is due, rather than going to the kiosk to pay, if you're a credit card payer anyway, it'll say, hey, your bill is due, would you like to pay that now? You don't even have to go to the kiosk. And you say yes. And it says, okay, paid, you know, and it takes care of it. So that's the idea, is you want that to happen. You want people not to even, you want them to use the kiosk one time for a credit card bill.
I think it's a valuable trade off.
So in the future, then you're not charged for the.
Well, you won't be charged anything if you use the kiosk or the phone. Like, in the future, if you were to pay, if we left things as they were, and it happened the way I just described, you went in, you paid, and then the next time you get this notice and says, hey, your bill is due, you want to pay that now, you would still be charged $3 per 100. And it would subtotal it. If you change that, it won't, and it won't charge it when you go in the first time, and it won't charge you any subsequent time either.
I support it.
I think we, we waive the, the credit card processing fee for the kiosk for the time being. Let's look at the impact of it and.
Well, I know a couple of people who will be impacted by it, because I got notified by it, so.
Well, I've prepared a, a short blurb in our, our newsletter. If y'all chose to take this motion, then we would, we would actually let people know that that's what's happening.
Great.
Yeah, that's a good motion.
Nice. What else?
We, you probably know this, you know, we don't have a water cells anymore. It's gone. It was too expensive to replace, so we just don't offer it at all.
Edwards Ock for authority inspection fee?
The blue, down.
No, this is something separate. This is the meter testing, meter change out, meter tampering.
Go down then, right down.
Right there, the blue.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to figure out. Water acquisition. What is that inspection type? I need to find out if that's for commercial inspection, like if we're going to go and inspect a installation of a plumbing or whatnot. I don't really answer that question.
Okay, so maybe we should remove that for now.
No, because that's on the building. I don't know. I don't know if this is tied to Bureau Veritas or, you know, we have our own inspector now, Ricky, who's been doing the commercial inspections. So I don't know if that's what that is, but I'll find out.
Okay, so we should probably remove that for now in the motion. I made a note of that. What is the street installation?
Streetlight installation?
Were people asking for streetlights?
Yeah, so we had a, I guess we had a streetlight. I don't think we're, I don't think we're doing that. We haven't, I think that's why that's taken out, is we're not installing streetlights. And so all the new subdivisions are in the CPS territory, so they'll, they install all the streetlights. So I think we removed it, because we're just, we're just not doing it. We're not in that business, not in the business.
Just replacing the ones that already exist.
So how does this work under the, is it a, under the meter fees? Is it $100 plus the smart meter? Because we're replacing them all and installing them all?
Yes, so it's a meter connection plus you buy, that's just the connection fee, it's $100. And then the meter itself, the smart meters, there's gas, electric, and water, and that's the cost of the smart meter.
Okay.
Now, good luck getting some of them. The lot, the delivery time on them is incredibly long, right now.
That's not for replacing the existing, we'd already agreed to that.
Yeah, the AMI is picking it. This is for new develop, like, again, this is someone builds a brand new house, does an infill, which is what's happening. If it's an infill lot and there was no service to that lot prior, then they'll have to buy a new meter, and this is the rate that we would charge.
Okay. So how does that happen? You charge them for that and then you install it when it gets there? You would switch it out, since we don't have them right now? Because the lead times are too long?
Yeah, they would have to get a standard meter until it's, it, yes. They get, we don't have a smart meter system anyway, right now. This is established in the fee schedule for the smart meters, but if they were, if, let's say this gets adopted, and a month from now, someone's ready to put a meter in, they're still getting the old meter.
My question is, do they pay the other ones in anticipation of the meters coming in?
Yes.
Yeah, they would still pay.
We still charge on that rate.
Okay.
And actually, we have ordered, so I, we did order a stock. We do have an excess supply for infill.
Okay.
For development, that kind of thing. If you're doing a large commercial development, those meters are quite a bit more expensive, and we did not order extra of those for that reason. But it's really the electric meters that has the long gas, the long lead time.
All right.
But yeah, we'd still charge that fee.
Then the water tap fee? The rest of them are just increased cost to us, so you're increasing the fees for that?
Yep.
I want, I think he might have just moved a little toes, but he said he had to get a bigger gas meter because he put in a, a backup generator, electrical generator, and because of that, the city, he had to pay the fee for the larger meter, $100, you heard that?
Yeah.
And we just, they just, they have to pay that to CPS.
They also have to put a bigger pipe in.
A bigger pipe in.
They have to replace the pipe with a larger pipe and put a larger meter in.
Okay.
Because they put in a big.
In order to run the generator.
Generator, yeah.
And those are things he had to pay that to like CPS or something.
Yeah, so the, the smaller generators, like, we're, we're looking at a 22 kilowatt, and that, that works off of the existing meter, but if you're getting a bigger one, he's got a big house, so that's why it had to happen like that?
I didn't know the answer.
CPS is one doing the work.
Oh, he called me.
If it's in our city limits, then it's our, it's our gas system. So similar increases in electric poles and whatnot.
Impact fees.
Now, we are in the process of, and the reason turbines are removed is we don't, we don't use turbines. They aren't, because they're obsolete. So that's really the only change here. Just know that we are in the process of updating our impact fees. So we're adopting this, knowing that Respec is currently working on a new impact fee ordinance, or impact fee study. And so far, it shows, what I'm seeing from them, their preliminary analysis is that it'll be, there'll be a slight increase. It's not tremendous, but there will be a slight increase. Okay. So that's all the turbines removed. Right of way, permanent application fee? So this is someone who wants to go in our right of way, whether it's a developer or a new provider.
To install utilities?
Right. Cellular, that kind of stuff. These are the new rates for the garbage. You, you, we know that they went up 13%. The city reduced its markup on the residential side, so in the past, we had a markup of 10%, and staff is recommending marking that up 5%, so reducing that. How's that? That's old versus new. Under the new contract, the waste management will be collecting all the commercial fees. Overages wasn't in here, it's now in here, so this is only be allowed, this can only change one time a year. That was one of the issues we had, was they were trying to make some changes in the middle of the year, and we said, no, can't do that. Roll off fees. Roll offs are fairly expensive, and they, they're in such high demand, they have been able to, you know, people, we've had a number of people calling up concerned because they got to get a roll off, they got to get a roll off, or they, they got one that's full and they need it picked up. And it's been a real challenge, and it's, you know, waste managers do the best they can, but they don't have enough staff or trucks or something, so that's been an issue. All right, I think that's it.
So I believe that the motion is to adopt an ordinance regarding the comprehensive fee schedule for the city of Castroville, with the exception of RV, daily, and residential dump fee, which will remain the same. The special holiday fees and parks stay, stay the same until Park and Rec Board can review. The fall pool fees increase by $3 for daily and include a 10-day pass for $70. We waive the credit card processing fee for the kiosk, and the omission of the inspection fee under the Edwards Ock for authority until further review for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023.
Great job.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
It was a non-issue.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, I'm very impressed.
You did that really well.
I was paying attention. I was really kind of hoping for the 7:30. I don't think we're going to make that.
Yeah, well, I only have, we're only at page 45 of our 259 page packet, so.
Is there anything else you wish to add there? I can, I'll call it.
Well, yeah. Next is consider and take appropriate action on ordinance adopting the investment policy. Scott?
I'm sorry. I, I think the city secretary just reported that this has to be published in the paper before it takes effect, the comprehensive fee schedule?
We can put it as of October 1st, but it has to be, it has to be, it has to be published first, because there's fees involved.
Right, okay.
So do we want to amend that motion to be effective on October 1st? No. When does it?
No, you can just leave it as is.
Okay, cool. All right. It just doesn't go into effect until?
Can't execute it until.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Bureaucracy has been satisfied.
So it didn't come in with the budget, it comes in on the separate?
They are in the budget, I assume, but we're having to go back and revisit some of them anyway, and bring it back, I guess.
The bu, yeah, I, I thought I showed it before. The budget's not reliant on these fees specifically. I mean, we've got, again, we conservatively estimate our expenditures and our revenues. So if there were changes, I don't think we're going to blow the wheels off of the budget, but that's what typically you adopt the budget and then the comprehensive fee schedule. I did give, provide you an early look, just so you had an idea what that, what, what the fees were looking like, what we were, what our draft fee schedule was for. The next couple of items are policies. There are not changes to these policies. This is just a recommended best practice, that you look at them annually. One of the things the mayor is challenging us with is looking at everything that we're supposed to look at on an annual basis. That's a little bit of a challenge, because you all have a lot of policies, the comprehensive plan, for one, the CIP, like, there's a lot of different things that are policy documents that really should be looked at, at least annually, right? And so this is our attempt to allow you to have eyeballs on these, these policies. We are not rec, again, not recommending changes at this time, but more, it's really just to give you an opportunity to look at them and.
Well, the next item is going to be to adopt investment policy.
Yes.
It's not the.
Yeah, I'm not saying don't adopt it. I'm saying, what I'm saying is, no, no, what I'm saying, we want you to look at these policies. This does need to be adopted tonight, but to the degree that there's changes that need to be made to it, you know, just like we just talked about the comprehensive fee schedule, let's, you know, let staff know and let us know what changes you'd like to make, and we'll bring it back at a future meeting.
But you have not made any changes.
But we have not made changes to the investment. That's correct.
We've had the same one for several years.
Right. It's good practice, that's all.
All right. So no presentations on this one then?
No.
That'll be included in our annual review of the policies.
Do you want a motion on that, or you want to defer it?
No, I'd accept a motion, since we're not making any changes to it. I just want to have, like, a presentation so that we have high level overview of it. And, and that's something that we can move into at, at a future date. They've been pretty busy with this and want to make any changes.
I just want to make one correction. On this, I have down as ordinance to be adopted, and in the packet that says it's a resolution. Do you make a motion, make it a resolution?
Is it a resolution or an ordinance?
It's a resolution.
Finance Director gave you a resolution.
Good.
Yeah, because the wording says I move to approve slash adopt the resolution investment plan as presented.
Yep. Councilman Dyer, you had a motion?
Yeah.
I would entertain that.
I'm trying to find it again, just a second.
The, the, motion would be discussion, or, I move to approve, adopt the resolution investment policy as presented.
I move to approve and adopt the resolution investment policy as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next one is on consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance adopting final FY budget 2022, or 2122 budget amendments.
Let's go. You'll see, this is the, changes have kind of been outlined for you in the notes section. The total amount is a $550,000 budget. There were changes to both revenues and expenditures. When you adopt the budget though, typically you, you adopt the expenditure side of it, so you don't really do a true up. You just show how much the expenditure's changed. And there's an outline, like I said, for you of what those changes are.
We started doing exhibits on the back of the ordinance, so that it's easier to one page at a time.
Thank you. Do you want to go over these really high level? Scott?
Sure. I mean, there's, so the increases in the budget, in. Okay, yeah, yeah. So the, the small amount of it is the general fund, the majority of it's a utility fund. In the general fund, there was a $6,500 increase in, to the library. Police, $10,500. Some of this is tied to the expenditures that were approved by council throughout the year. Community development, there's $5,000 increase. Parks and Rec, $56,000. RV park, $3,000. Finance, $15,000, and non-departmental, $4,000, for a total of $100,000. And then we court, the municipal court revenue was reduced by, or I'm sorry, I think reduced to the amount of $62,330, which is, reflects the actual receipts. And then on the utility fund side, the electric has an increase of $285,000. Water, $40,000. Refuge, $120,000, and utility admin of $5,000. You can kind of see what line items those are hitting, but I can go into more detail after the speaking, if you want to know. Okay, what was that line item? Why is it this amount? I don't, I don't have that tonight, but I can get it to you.
Do we have an amendment number on this one?
It's in the verbiage for.
It has a blank amendment number.
The ordinance number, I'll have to just, I'll note it.
Okay.
Once you, yes, once you, and he probably put it in there because he didn't know. Once we pass them, I go to the next number.
Okay. Because it's part of the verbiage that they put in here as far as the, what they, to read.
So I think it is approval of fi, final budget amendment to the general fund and enterprise fund in the amount of $550,000 to increase line item budget accounts, according to Exhibits A and B for breakdown.
I'd like to make a motion so red.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Scott.
The other comment I want to make is although, you know, we saw those expenditures, and we say, well, geez, like on the utility side, all that's offset by revenue, and it's, you know, generally, you're spending more, if you're selling more water, you're spending more on the chemicals, supplies, et cetera. You know, the, the cost of purchasing power, you're offsetting when you sell it. So all of the, the lion's share of that, the $450,000 was to utility fund, and all of that is, is offset by a.
Additional revenue.
Yeah, additional revenue, by a similar amount of revenue.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, understood. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on a recommendation from the airport advisory board to change certain member positions on the board.
This was discussed at a prior meeting. Um, it's pretty clear, uh, the, the recommendation from the airport advisory board was to remove Brad Lauderdale as a, a full voting member and to, uh, put him as a alternate, and then to move Carlos De Leon from, uh, the alternate to the full, uh, full board position.
With a term ending in 2024.
Both of the terms are for the same length. They were just, uh, placed on, uh, reappointed, and so it would just, it's easy.
Okay. I think that Scott stated it. Does our airport advi, uh, liaison want to make a motion?
Yeah. So I would like to, uh, I want to make sure that it does read here that it is the request of the airport advisory board, which he does. So, uh, I'd like to move that the council approved the request made by the airport advisory board to Brad Lauderdale to the alternate position number one and move Carlos De Leon to full board position number two, both with a term ending in 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on applications submitted for open board positions.
On, on this, excuse me, uh, you've seen both of these candidates or applicants. Uh, there is an open, still open board position, uh, alternate number two on the airport board. And so if you so wish to put, and I can't say his last name, Jan, Janasis maybe, uh, he is requested to be on the airport board and then, of course, Samantha's here. Nope, she was here tonight. Uh, she has submitted her application for the library board and we do have a open position on the full board position, uh, to fill on that.
Well, I move that we, uh, appoint Brian Ganasus to the, uh, alternate number two position on the airport advisory board and Samantha Mertz to the open position on the library board.
And I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, discussion on draft IT policy prepared by council member Dyer.
Uh, all I want to say on this tonight is, is this is a work in progress. Uh, the city administrator's been getting lots of information that I requested. We're trying to merge it all. Uh, we still have quite a bit of information that's not yet been discovered, but, uh, I hope you'll read the draft at your convenience and when we get to the point where we're ready to actually discuss it and move to adopt it, we have to reformat it and put it into the right format for a policy letter, but right now, we're just working on the nuts and bolts and there's still a few bolts that we haven't found.
I, I would just say Herb is using, Councilman Dyer is using the we very, very generously because he is devoted. I, I don't know how many hours, but I would imagine quite a bit of time?
Lots.
To developing this, and I greatly appreciate his help, uh, in doing it, and he's asked minimal input from me, so, uh, I also appreciate that. Separate from this, so this is the policy document that would kind of guide employees' behavior as it return, as it relates to IT use and the city is, uh, it relates to investment in IT resources, et cetera, uh, and can help us in our effort to, uh, when we finally go out and do the RFP. Uh, but just as kind of a report on where that stands, um, I have a company that I'm, uh, speaking to that would do an IT review. Uh, they sent me a proposal, uh, and tomorrow I'll, I have a conference call with them to discuss that proposal and to really kind of dive into the weeds of what exactly they're gonna do as far as an assessment is concerned, but the goal would be that they would do a robust assessment of our IT, uh, needs and then develop an RFP as a result from that, um, so.
Well, I think Councilman Dyer's doing the right thing on pushing, there's a number of different areas he's pushing on policy, and I think that that's a great guiding document. I think it's a great way to make sure that we're very clear with staff what expectations are, we're very clear with our vendors on what expectations are, so this is the right thing to do. And I, I do agree that we need to bring somebody that's got, uh, technology changes a lot, and so I think that we take that policy document and provide that, uh, and then get the feedback from them, and I think that'll, that'll put out a much more substantial.
And there's a flip side to it that we all need to get ready for is when we really define what we want to tell the city, what policy we want to establish, we have to understand what it's gonna cost, because I think, I think it's gonna cost more than we're paying now. So we need to really pay attention to this, and if you don't understand it, feel free to call me and I'll try to enlighten you. Uh, more than likely, I'll be referring you to the mayor because he's a little bit closer to this. I've been retired for a number of years and he's still working, so I think he's got more current knowledge about cloud-based things than I do, but I can help a little bit.
You know, I applied for that position, retirement, they said I wasn't qualified.
Well, I was and I took it.
Work at Jordan's.
She was the one that turned me down.
No, no, seriously, I do appreciate you pushing on the policies. I think that's very prudent.
So, so just for clarification, because Herb had suggested it in his memo here, but the person you're gonna talk to tomorrow would, would need the policy and then also help develop the RFP, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I haven't sent them the policy yet, but, but yes, whoever is chosen to do that, whether it's them or someone else, ideally, they're looking at our policy, they're also looking at?
So then the idea is to have a policy in place before we develop the RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I think it's gonna take some time to get the RFP, because we want to have that assessment done first.
Agreed. All right, any, uh, further discussion on the IT policy?
Applause.
Yeah. Please continue to, it's good to educate yourself, uh, even on the process. Uh, a lot of the process portion of that, uh, it hasn't changed. The technology's changed, but the process, the, the things you need to look at, um, are pretty standard, so it would be good for you to get, uh, get aware of that. Next item is review city policies on, one is financial, two is personnel, and three is purchasing, including vehicle replacement.
So again, this kind of goes back to my comments earlier, and I apologize because I thought these were right next to each other. When you're in the, I know you all know this, when you're in the middle of the agenda electronically, it's hard to see, uh, what the, what the order is. Uh, but, um, these are being supplied, again, just to get your eyeballs on it, I, I have established, I think I made you aware of this a while back, but for your information or just as a reminder, uh, I've estat, established a employee advocacy committee, is kind of what I'm calling them. Um, it's a group of, uh, employees from various departments, generally not directory level, um, that, uh, have been asked to kind of look at our personnel policies from an employee perspective and advise me on the types of changes that they'd like to see done. So this is things that you would expect to be important to employees, like certificate pay and vacation and how we treat, you know, whether we have a PTO policy and what kind of employee benefits we provide, whether we pay for education and we pay for, um, you know, certificates or, or things of that nature. So they've been, uh, Jonah Chang, our, uh, parks superintendent is the person that's kind of leading that effort as the board chair, and Deborah serves as, uh, kind of a liaison, if you will, from the administrative staff, uh, and, and also just as eyes and ears from someone who's been here for longest, who has the longest tenure in this city. So I think that's valuable and important. Uh, anyway, they're, I think they're doing good work. I don't have any recommended changes at this time, but, uh, my, my goal is for them to kind of bring changes ad hoc to me as they weigh in on different things and, and then I'll bring them, uh, to you all.
Do you got anybody on, from PD on your group?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Was Ashley, but now it's, uh?
I'm not sure who's gonna, they, they weren't able to?
Oh, it's Terry.
Oh, she was here.
It's Terry.
I'm sorry. She was here.
I think it was Ashley originally, Ashley, it, we started this right, but she was pregnant, and so she ended up going on maternity leave and, uh, Terry Satterwhite's now the, the rep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Next item is, uh, staff reports. My only question on this is, um, why is Waldo hiding?
I think it's hilarious.
Because Chuck Norris scared him. Apparently, there was two references to Chuck Norris in his reports, and we only caught one of them for several months. And I didn't, I don't know where the other one was, and I, I looked very, it made me, maybe he lied to me just so that I read every single word?
Make sure you read the report.
In his report, because he does a very good job of hiding it.
He told me he wasn't sure people were reading, because I read it and he sends it to me and I just laughed.
I will say, you know, honestly, I like the way that, um, that Brianna's starting to put together, like, the permits. I think that creates a much better, uh, picture of what's going on. I like, under the developments, how she's showing what the different, uh, items are. I had a question on, um, over in front of the Moy Center for that. Uh, is there a permit required for a parking lot?
I think there would be.
I think there would be, yeah. I don't know if you caught that, the demolition of, uh, historic piece of art. They didn't know, I don't think, but?
They don't have a coffee shop there, so it was not the Moy Center, what?
In front of the, no, in front of the Moy Center. It was the old, um, I forget his name, um, he was the, the one that helped out, uh, that assisted with the, the rock sculptures at the Moy Center?
Oh.
Uh, in front of it, in that little triangle right in front of their entrance?
Where the coffee shop is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Put a drive-through in.
Yeah, they put a drive-through, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they put a drive-through.
Oh, that does need a permit, and it did get a permit, and unfortunately, this is one of the things that was highlighted, we didn't end up showing the pictures, uh, because someone spoke too long, but there were pictures, uh, that were, that were shared, gonna be shared last night, and that was one of them. Our current code allows that to happen, and it's terrible.
Demolition is unrestricted.
In my unfiltered opinion.
It's a shame, man, but it does go to the, to the fact, I know that's a little off topic, but it goes to the fact.
I'm, I'm only kidding. You did a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, there is a second one, that's why we're, because there is a second one inside the Moy Center, but it's the same guy.
Right.
Did you, because you and I were the same presentation, but, but that means?
So that was not on their property, but it was, I mean, it was on this other property, but it wasn't recognized as important, I guess.
Right. Well, if we don't tell them, like, I honestly, I didn't know that it was, that it, I didn't know what it was.
Right.
And I doubt that they knew what it was. So I'm not disparaging them?
Right.
For not knowing what it is, I'm disparaging us for not telling them that this is something that's important to the city of Castroville, it's a, an important part of our history, and it's just, it's a shame that we did not cover that, so.
On the code enforcement, I noticed, uh, our favorite, uh, limbo junkyard area has increased again.
Uh, the amount, the stuff that's there has increased?
Number of vehicles.
Yeah. Number of vehicles, they got more trailers in there with a bunch of junk.
Put up a fence so you can't see it.
Well, the?
What's on, Old Highway?
The sec, third and, the two from the bottom?
It's not on, it's on Ohio Highway N, it's Geneva.
Yes, Geneva.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it's growing again and I have people constantly asking me, uh?
What's going on here?
Yeah, this is the person that has a warrant out.
Yeah, I know. Got several warrants out and, okay.
Yeah, the laws are made for, for people who are, are gonna be compliant. If you're complete, yeah, if you just completely ignore it, it's, you know, we put a lien on the property eventually.
Well, and I know the, the house behind them, once you go past, if you're heading toward, to our neighborhood, that, that street, there's a house for sale right there and, uh, it's raising a lot of concerns by, you know, prospective buyers of?
Yeah, what is this?
Why do I want to live near a junkyard?
Yeah.
So it's affecting the people around them. Okay, thank you.
Get a court order to start towing off vehicles.
I like the way that she's popping these pictures in there, by the way.
Yeah, that's cool, the Coran store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's going for brownie points, guys.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll let her know.
Hey, what are they doing, the brownie classes?
The brownie classes?
Yeah, I love the cooking classes.
I can get, I'll give you the Dixon family recipe for a dollar.
Oh, there you go. All right.
7:32. These two gentlemen owe me a dollar.
I just wanted to be noted that so came from the library picture there and he's petting a snake.
You're in there twice.
Petting a snake.
You're in there twice.
Yeah, you, you, you go right ahead.
All right. Any other questions on the staff reports? Oh. All right, next item is?
I know that my graph sounds a little so.
I think you should know that.
Is he also petting the snake?
No, he's not going to board petting snake, he's the one, he's the insurance company. Did he get pet?
So next item is executive session. The city council will meet in closed session under provisions of the Texas Government Code, section 551.071 entitled Consultation with Attorney, and section 551.085 entitled Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. The items under discussion are Calic Auto Development Agreement and Cobblestone Village Development Agreement. We're gonna go into the executive system at, executive?
Session.
Session. At, uh, 7:34.
7:31, I'm sorry.
Four.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there too. He's gonna do it after the executive session.
I'm leaving this soon.
Oh, great. Love it.
I like the command decision.
That is, this is?
It's a half-tease.
That's a half-tease.
Well, I told you that. That's, that was my recommendation. That looks like more than a half-tease. It looks like more than a half-tease.
No, that's a half-tease. It's, it's a half-tease. Here is a four-tease.
Right.
This is what?
Some of those look almost?
They do, but it, it, this is what you get if you buy a?
Right.
Okay, this is what?
Well, it's corner four.
Yeah, okay.
They dropped ours now. We, we could do something similar to that. I don't have a policy.
But we have to prepare more than I can prepare.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. So you're dealing drugs now?
Uh-huh.
And it's great. Oh, yeah, look at that. It's associated with the?
Oh, definitely. This is what you pay two, three bucks for.
That's a corner two.
So this is what we're gonna put on it. I'm gonna, I need 300, right? I'm gonna ask Darren and I are meeting Thursday morning about a Steinbach House, for sure.
Well, now you know, you could put a lot less.
You did?
Well, yeah. This is what we're sold under that.
This is gonna have?
But he's also key, right?
Oh, yeah. But this is gonna be mixed with sand. I'm gonna have two, two or three tables being put in sand, this here too, just spread out.
Are you sand or is that, is that stuff they sell at, um, Walmart, you can buy the bag, that's Sandy, uh, pop swivel? It's sand, it's called Sandy.
No, Sandy is better.
All right.
And I'm gonna ask Darren Thursday if he can, this is what we're gonna put on it, and
Are you sanding, or is that, is that stuff they sell at Walmart, you can buy the bag, that's Sandy, Pop's Oil, it's sand, it's called Sandy.
No, Sandy is better, Sandy is better.
All right.
And I'm gonna ask Darren Thursday if he can, this is what we're gonna put on it, and I'd like him to see if he can get to a poppy, because he's pretty good. Just that, just that. This is probably, yeah, like, maybe we'll just start putting, giving him some...
It looks like this was, this is just something...
I'll take him with, I'll take that with me. This could be planned for next year.
You open the secretary?
No, I got a whole, yeah, they started falling. So this will be this year. We'll maybe work on something like this for next year. And I'm gonna, I have to buy some more bags, and I have to buy sand, and I'm gonna buy it out of the Steinbach House, baby cat shop.
Okay, that's great. I met someone this afternoon, or I'll tell you why later.
What?
I met someone this afternoon, or I'll tell you why later. She's in the library, but she went, she went, she went for a walk. I'm gonna tell you all, the president, or, 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 or... I don't, you don't, no idea what a park is, but it all makes sense when you're in a park.
So that's one. In my opinion, they have the maps upside down, because down is North, so now he's on the bottom. And so it'll be south of Manhattan, it's like right here is Walmart. So the opposite Walmart on the south side, so you gotta turn your head upside down.
So we'll see if they buy you.
Okay, so this is, uh, south of, what is it?
This is Cobblestone Village. So what I can tell is that we went and talked to him after pulling all of our shoes, and this part, they said, well, we can still, we can do anything. If we work this back part a little bit, so it has better connectivity through. So like instead of this long cul-de-sac, we have some little, little roads that connect through, more ways to get on. Uh, that's full ninety, yeah, this is ninety, here. This is that, the road that runs behind, so this is the hill with the crane heads on it.
Yeah. So it's not like that, it's a, it's a...
I'm not sure where you are in St. Louis.
He's a, okay. He come down and forced the lower, the crossroad.
Yeah.
He go past the first stop sign, but before he did the second sign, he sat back.
Yeah, there'll be space, I think.
Come on, I bring this stuff, what we don't know, that shit, what we looking at, or you driving on the...
I don't think, I think some of this has maybe been laid out, but for the most part, I don't think it's...
Not yet.
Oh, no, 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 not. Oh, we just need, drives around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, 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 there's, there's the, the golf course, there's the bank, right? That's all, I, that, that six houses going up, behind the wall.
Yeah, you know, they couldn't let this... Where is that bridge? So that bridge is gonna be, so, you know, this is, this isn't an existing pond, this is gonna be where the majority of the trees, based from how it's formed. So a lot of the, like, all, most of the runoff will be on, will be in that space. Now, could be getting out of water, all we're doing here, all that water, to keep the ground wet, I'm not sure, we'll see. I wasn't, but, but, she has stories about them, trying, like, even even a church, the bridge was just gone, and so instead, they had all members who were already there, and started exchanging. We got too many eggs, and we needed bread, and someone, some, one set up lawn chairs, and shot off fireworks.
The water was flushed, and then they disappeared, or, or, came in for another, the, 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 where they had sent those, the, the waters to...
Oh, yeah. I have my wife's grandparents' house, they lived down in the River Valley, and a policeman came knocking at two AM, saying, you guys gotta get out of here. So grandma got up, and grandma did, just, we gotta, it's like adding some water, the water's not gonna be at the side, and it does, I'll just get him a tractor and drive out, and, and it came up to about... A foot or two horizontal from the foundation of the house, my pardon, but never actually flooded well, so you didn't have to, uh...
We were down here, it's, it was like, uh, behind the house.
It's a big building, and so water's coming through.
Okay, well, it's like, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna...
That's all, yeah.
That's a good job, so, yeah.
I gotta tell you, we're gonna be working, we're gonna be, we're gonna be, we're gonna get going. So this is what we're, you know, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I know some of the station exit numbers, because it's been a while, a couple years. I haven't seen this one.
Maybe blocks for the lot. See, we, we, we want official notes to cover our lots, uh, as we make this, uh, shorts, very good, uh, perfect, uh, for, we had put out about a hundred square foot lot, and, and they helped, helped us stay on. And we got all of our lots out there, and we brought, brought out.
Both these on the same, on the front, over here, will be probably the same as on, I mean, the same as our station, so it'll be bigger. It would be these in the back, will be a little bit smaller. Yeah, and I think that was intentional, I think, yeah, we tried to talk to them, and they put in some smaller ponds, so hopefully we'll get some smaller houses.
You know, rooftop, I'm making up like, if they're in a city, in the United States, that's supported by rooftop, gotta have doors, and, and the door would knock, you had to pour it, it's crazy, yeah.
Well, a lot, a lot of the maintenance on the city side is actually based on the area you serve in, I think, also. You let the same number of pipes over this four house, you have two thousand people.
Uh, it's like, or if you're talking about, you know, people would get, uh, or, you know, pay, you, terror, or, or, you know, uh, 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 if, uh, if you're...
I think the idea is that a lot of this will be air for, like, hard area, and people can go run around. And then some of these spaces between the buildings, they're maybe, but are there areas not just parking lots? I'm not sure. Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're, these are two separate lines on the same area, so it's whatever's up there, it doesn't mean it's not the same. But there'll, there'll be mark space that, that we, that we mentioned on, along the bridge over there, that's, that's where you can go for recreation use.
Okay, and, and, what is it, this?
That's the, that's the, the development, so if the airport is under, this is, in fact, you might get a seat, right, yeah, so this, this is the existing, either triangle.
Right, problem, I don't know.
No, it's probably, well, it's a little, just, yeah, airport, um, the track here, and, and, I don't know, there's a, on this, but, but it's a little, it's a little bit up front, uh, but it'll, but, um, they're playing our pictures here somewhere. Yeah, oh, here, here's a big, so this is that, and these are, if they make enough money, decide they won't come back, I guess. And so here's the great bits. And that's the gas station.
Yeah, what kind of yard is there, yeah.
Um, but then that's the gas station at Walmart, that's the, 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 the median, so...
No, 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 that can't be.
Well, that is, uh, I can't, I don't know if it's the same grid, uh, there, there are great bits on there, yeah, right there. And then that's the gas station for Walmart, and that's where the median is at the turn-in for Walmart.
The green bits are there on the other side of the...
Our, our side, not the, on the other side, you're saying, uh...
Okay, well, there, there are a lot of great bits there regardless, but they're on that account or something else.
Yeah, but just, uh, these, these green ones here, uh, these are, uh, dealership.
The, their last, dealership would be over here somewhere, because that is, so that makes these...
That farm dealership, yeah, you put that, that's, yeah, that's on this side, south, this is south.
Yeah, that's south, I think.
Yeah, so that's, that's not the one spoiler out, and I, they're on the far side, or, or, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I, it's confusing as hell.
So I don't know what that apparent triangle is, but that's a bigger, yeah, your average of what's around.
So where's my, would you like the, the, correct side?
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
See, this, uh, over the cost.
So over the cost, you can be down here still a little bit, um, right here is where we turn, yeah, by the right here is where you kind of go.
Sure, or master, or...
And that's the, yeah, a lot of people sell stuff to you here.
Yeah, see, that's that, the, 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 uh... I heard this is a very expensive entrance, entrance, I don't know if there's any, or not, but, uh...
I, I would guess that it's only expensive because if you own it otherwise.
You know, Denver, you know, uh...
I don't know, I don't know who owns it, I'm just saying, I imagine whoever owns that, sorry, I don't have a hand.
Your masters own that, you know, this, and this is not innocent. Again, that's county, he wouldn't, yeah, he never finished his house, he's lived there thirty-five years, so this tax is gonna be low. Gentlemen, Mr. Rader, if you're ever off duty, and you're in the neighborhood, uh, stopping, have a cold.
Along the back.
Yeah, you know where my other driveway is, there, that's my shop, that's my hang day, stop and have a culture, yeah, you're welcome. Let me miss you, sir.
Pleasure to be here.
I never introduced myself to you, I've seen all of that, but my fans, uh...
David, that's, David.
Thank you, I'm, I'm hard here, huh?
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be seventy pretty quick, I'm eighty pretty quick, so I'll get, I'm losing it.
Nice meeting you, Mike.
Yes, sir, y'all take care, have a good day.
Thank you. There is, I don't think there's any coordination, uh, yeah, nothing after, especially in the general. And Bryce isn't, and, and exploring here, or, or...
No.
It's, it was, we worked, uh... Yeah, so he was, he was there yesterday, um, he was, right, he was like, he gave a presentation with, uh, the mayor, um, and played his consulting. And this is, I'm gonna be at the library for lots of religion, so we, he's, that, it's good, I think, we're excited, but, it's a little... So I think it's about watching some of my patients. So creating, crushing spots, bushes, churches. You don't know about how to do that for yourself?
Is which is golden, which is red, which is blue, which is?
Golden chip. So which is bushes and which is? Yeah, honey, that's same on, in a bar. First recognize it, it's all the churches. Very, very, very changing those over. But like, you know, the, the churches. So little, little. And so, well, I think.
Oh, it's really.
And that's the reason. It's a patchy, it's a nerdy shit. Right. You barbeque sandwiches, sweets. I don't have a problem. Or we have. Happy Park. Yeah. Well, that's something. The other half of Park is not. Uh, they really. Happy, but also. Also, I would like. That happened with the churches. I have a sense of this. I have a sense of this. I have a sense of this. I'm going to. Why are you trying to, I think, what same mistake is everybody? Yeah. It's kind of. I'm, I'm going to. We go, I have a sense of this. I had sure of first, I'm going down. One, one, come on. What is your, your, from your eyes? From this part? What is your eyes, your eyes? But it's, um, towards the shit, I don't know. If, if you, uh. You get, maybe it would be around. It's often happening. That is seen also. Not like, uh, if you get like in Texas, or if you start, maybe you can test this, you can try it for, for classes. You can, uh, maybe get here as a sample, some of it, it's the same hours. Especially for. If you're not, I don't know. It's, you know, whatever. I'm sure. It's. It's better than that. It's cheaper, it's, it's easier to drive, obviously. It's cheaper to find, obviously, just a little bit of money, you know, we're actually, you know, it's. Um, it's, we're talking. It's like, almost exactly, it's just a, um. Should, I, literally, over twelve hours, you're just getting, uh, it's, it means the right situation, track, or Texas is. All the, all the, all the line of the river. It's, 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 oh, yes, but there's so few lines of access. It takes like four, five hours to get the other side to be lost. You know, in a, five, sixteen counts. And that way, it goes twice as expensive as ten hours to do it, say this. It's just very, 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 exactly, yes. Um, it, it's not. Cause like, you can get off, you know, four P M. And you like, spend thirty minutes back in one minute, just sit there, go over and, uh. Cause it needs to be, uh, the line that goes to your hometown. But it doesn't actually have a lot of, it's really long, and then the test is just backup on the right spur. And then for an hour, and there you go. So like, the, the space between the station, the spur is occupied, and you try to be an hour and a half away. So. And it's, it's like that all the way to Texas, once you did, we are in Southwater. It's awesome, here, you can go faster than, you're going basically as fast as you can, you know. Except, don't have to worry about it. Obviously, when they, you. You're doing one, 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 maybe, that's true. You, you, this is the also, I guess. Very sure, it's hard. I can hear this, you know, I should, I should. Getting the trial. But, it's the right. So, like, very, 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 that was, that would be. Forty four, it's not for that yet. These are forty one, like forty, thirty members. Uh, all of U S sixty seven, kind of, that's the one, and it was. More straight from, though, not just, it was much more pleasant drive, and it's, it's really good for the house. That's kind of. I'm not a good kid, I'm not a good, I'm a good student, I'm a good student. So compared to, you know, you, 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 you. That's the one. Very, very, yeah. It's not this, that's the one. They want. How's that, just, uh, three, three? And then, one, two, three, you have a person, two, three, four. You throw it on the ball. So, a lot of time, you, you, a lot of, uh. What has, uh, you know, that don't really, you know, you, you like. Where I can walk around, and then, then turn water. And, uh, walk, uh. This time, again, you'll have, uh, the same, but. Almost, almost automatic. They just didn't have.
How did they do?
Yeah.
And it was.
In a lot, in a lot of perfect area. And after that, you can, you can get a seat, and, right, if you feel, uh, if you feel, if you. Great fun. Then, away a little bit more. It's a lot of, it's, uh. It was, it's like a circle.
I can, oh, beautiful.
Yeah. Like, same. Yeah, it's like. That's what things, supposed to be, it's like, uh, that's what you draw. When you get a point, it's, it's like, almost, doesn't really, uh, it's like, you still see it. So you're standing in the president, you're, you're. Here. After. Not, not that I was soft. Both, and, 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 after, after session, I don't know, it's, it's, okay, then they, they, they go around, he does, seven, or, uh. Twenty, or, or, it's, uh, second, you know, I don't know, it's, hold on, because they're before. That's not, they started, just kind of, it's happening. Spend a little time. Kind of, it's like. Yeah, that happened. Like, to be exact, I escaped traffic. I look, and across the city, uh, which can start speeding. And after about a minute and a half, it starts slowing down. And it comes to a complete stop. Just doesn't, it's, and, and, okay. I guess you go back to the, uh.
So, I'm uh over on in the theater. Uh I said this happened to me this year. My wife's like, but. They want to change the what for that. She hates her uh. Yeah. So. I was. The same same two years ago. I've had a very short time since. I mean, I've seen this. That's why. She. He's a little. As he grew, he was across the house. And it's like. He. All in. It's. Right. I. Was. Yeah. I have a. It's kind of. It's not like it's. Right. It I I heard. This is. So uh I. I can't. We. Yeah, that's a. Well. We did a few places. For this. This is the. I said that first year. I mean, also the. I said that. At my work. Same. This year. Call you. Okay, it's. Excellent. Um after the boys got out of front, this is. Maybe it's just that it might be an analysis. As well. I'm sure he's. The. It's there now. And it's off the target. Not direct. Yeah. I do. I'll see you soon. That's. I'm just getting some. Where is it? I saw. Now we have. He's. Drive. Let's. There's the. Over. Which. Who said. Since. Oh, I also. Oh, it's here. Stand. I figured. It's one of those. Or this or us. We want. Absolutely. This has. Great. Thanks. I think. Yeah, you can. Fine. It's. It's. All of those. It's true. Stop. Yes. It's. It's. So. I'm. I'm not assuming. Parts. I'm assuming. Probably. Whatever. I have. The. Parts. That. It's. It's still a position. Here's a issue. But. Because of. State. So. This is. It's. And. There. We're. Of course. It's. Happens. Nice. This is the. Fair. Always. Outside. So. Couple of times. Here's. Pictures. Is that. It's. So. These two apartments have. Now. It's all. But. Did. Then. And. Oh. And uh. Head. And. I went to the back. And. I wish. Should. Head. But. Right. I have basically. So. It's very. How do you fill up apartments? Which is. Hilarious. Do you wear designers? Yeah, we're really good at. Yeah. So. I was. Only before. She is. She was so. On. And. And. It's. I'm supposed to sell. It's. It's. Um. Uh. I see. Well, you know, I mean, if you get something on your. But. I'm serious. Some people set off. Rockets. Rockets. Right. 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 One of these. And I have. I have. So. We hold down there. It's. Yeah. Probably not. Two. On behind. See. So. Clear. After. You guys are like juggling. But. People that. It's a little. We talk to. I don't think. This is. Uh. I'm. So. Say. That's. It's. 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 So. Shots. I've been setting. Just. Really. So. Power. Well. We. All of these. I'm. I. There is a big bit of. Like five. We don't have. Uh. We. It's. Parents can be. It's. Everything else. Everyone's. So. Something. And uh. Right. In. She's. Inside. Jesus. I know. So. One. Two. Three. Sure. And. So. It's. It's. Right. Right. Yeah. That's. That's. Most. Sim. It's like. What. What's. And. And. Time. Actually. Push. It's all. This one. It's. This is. That's why. So. It's. Sorry. Everybody. So. So. Hopefully. It's. But. The one that's. Which happens. Is. Is. The. They have. To. This. Um. Three. Others. That could be four apartments. That could be four. Apartment. Above. Same. It's crazy. Crazy. This. So. That's really. Four. So. We'll see. I'm. This. I hope. Sorry. So. It's. But. This. Is. How. They were sort of. So. It's. Starting. This. There. There's. Real. Very. Same. This. Really. To. Social. That's. People. So. So. It is. On. So. So. She's. I see. It's. Shoot. That. That's. That's. What. Keep that. So.
Huh?
Yeah.
He got. He has office. Okay, good. That's going all right. We had him.
It's. It's.
You're ready. I first came late. Third day. Which I home. There. They've been here since ten. I'm gonna go. They don't like you running in the back. So. I won't. When this was, when I first got these, they were real quiet. Now they're old. And some of them got that high whistle, what?
I would say they disassembled. They probably did disassemble. Others.
Oh, I clean them every couple days. And it's interchangeable. And I wash those. So. I use a hard power back. But. When I first got it, you turn them on and they would just go. So I told um Deborah, check this out. I won't.
Hi.
And so. I told her all night. I let her. So she bought one too. God, I have no. Power. They're something. They they're not as strong as they were. But the Valerie who I first got with, she turned the franchise back over to Joe. Anyway. She called it the beast. It's gotta be real terrible. There's cords. Even that side of the corner. It'll be. Gets up. So. I'm calling this to off somebody's got that name tag uh. That's. That airport manager. What's this for? Anyway. I ate. I'm eating that bus playing on the floor underneath the desk. And the light was not shining under that the way that the desk was. And even though it lights up, I just go. Man, the good thing I know, I heard. Turn it off. And I just chewed the haircut. Computer. This phone charging. I chewed it all up. So I told him, you know, I'll replace them. Get him. Get you the receipt. Nah, it's all right. Got spare. She left hers. She was at this desk right there. It switched her over to. Public works now. She had her iPhone. Or anything. And. I tore it. Yes.
You can see.
They don't need more tan no more. I'm going to the bathroom. I won't take. So. She. Also. What do you do?
I worked in the Southwest Research Institute. The Southwest Research Institute.
Oh, okay. I don't know what that is.
Uh, I play with robots. With robots.
Oh, awesome. Oh, okay. I have a friend. Huh? Robotic, right? Like a Roomba. I have a friend in California that's uh. He's probably in his fifties. But he, as a kid, loved all that stuff. And airplanes. He can fly helicopters. And drones. And of course, he designed it all and uh. Amazing stuff. I always call him the computer. He's a multi-millionaire. It's about two grand. Lives in a big huge mansion overlooking Buffalo Park in San Diego, California. With his wife. His daughters are all grown now. And they went to college in New York. Had so much money. And they said, well, we wanna take some. So his wife gave him a Prius for his birthday. Right? Big guy. So he gave her some big huge SUV. They love it, you know? And it don't look like an SUV inside. I mean, it is like. It's like if a banker drive or something, you know? But anyway, put this dirt back to New York. So they go to New York. Before they leave, he decides he goes to all the schematics of the car. And he figures out, he's involved in this little, I've seen the box. In fact, they told me about that. And he made one from electric. Huh? An electric. Just.
Probably. And.
I have no idea. He explained it to me a bit. Anyway, so he. He um. Now he gets a hundred and thirty seven. So he walks to New York, drives the car. They get to New York. And and I mean, he's but he's down to earth, you know? And we've been friends since. Teens. And passes my brother's best friend. Came out of the house too. Anyway. So they go and they check out the college and they like it. And then the daughter originally wanted to be in the dorms and be sociable. They didn't like dorms. So they said, oh, that's okay. So they call up some real estate guy. And he shows them around the area. And they've dropped dropped millions of dollars on a house that's four blocks from the college. Oh. Like it was nothing. You know?
If you can qualify for the mortgage and college term, you can pay it back easily. Wait.
I'm sure he knows, I mean.
Yeah.
They both. His wife's a CPA. And, I mean, but they dabbled, and they got all these different companies under this one umbrella. Anyway. She. She was one of the accountants for this great firm that did in-home care. Not just for old people, for anybody that needed in-home care. And the fence raided the place. And she didn't do none of the taxes and stuff, you know, except for payroll or sort of incoming. And the little ones doing a achievement for the company. So they raided it and kind of, and so they went into her office, and she's sitting there and, you know, stop what you're doing and follow along and took over it. So she said, so the owners called her up later and said, we want you to, and, 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 and. She said, I don't mind, no federal presence, we people, people crazy. I'm gonna take over your company.
There you go.
And she did. So when the clients found out what was going on and the employees. Her and one of the other employees, uh, who was a registered nurse and all this stuff, which is half a half. They turned around, one of them got this license, and ended up all applying to all the employees. Well, multi-million dollar, just like, right up. A lot of building, you know, who did what they needed to, right up. And then she went to college and got her nursing degree. So that she'd know what was going on. That's, I mean, these people are really smart. They know exactly what they want and what they're doing, you know? But you'd never know from that, you know? They're just down to earth, he's just so cool. On the Tom and Marbury. And he's been playing. He's a musician too. They had his fifteen minutes of fame. He was in this heavy metal group that was called. Clot coma and the IVs. And their first album, Shozakai. Coming from inside the car, out the windshield of the car. And then on the back of the cover of Shozakai, all wrapped up, he said, the IVs all over it. In a hospital bed. Anyway. And he's a great musician. Great. But I just love being around it. Better tomorrow. I gotta get up early. And they're on a two-point down. In my room? Hmm? You got the library? No, I only, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I only do this, but Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I do all the others. And, and. I figured, you lock your office when you've got classified records.
You notice that?
Huh?
You notice that? You notice that?
Well, I go to clean it, and I go, I open the door and it's locked. And I, I don't take it personal, that's cool.
That's for.
Well, I was, I used to be an officer, I was sergeant. I know how it all works. I got, I, I was in juvenile also, so. And I know those, those, you can't, see, Tuesdays and Thursdays mornings, I clean juvenile probation office. So there's times when, for a while there, they, and of course, you gotta go through a background check for this, and just like, after a year, you know? But. They'll leave paperwork out on their desk. And then they say, oh, oh, I should have, they should have pulled, oh. I said, I don't need them to look at it. You gotta understand, China's money. I gotta, I'm getting it out. The sooner I get done, the more money I'm making. You know, I gotta routine. I says, I know all that from before. Because, you know, I'm an officer. If, if you're. If you have a certain kid, right? A lot of kids, they just tell you everything and why and what. And I tell them, no, you don't tell me none of this, this is not my business. You know, that's all, all confidential. Yes, okay, I wanna tell you. And so they tell you, you know? I mean, they'll tell you. I was smoking weed and I, I took this stuff and I got way deep that I don't know where I had a bad, I had a plan. I tried to drive, I pulled off the line, wrecked the car. Ended up in jail, I'm like, oh, more choices. Just, I don't judge a person, you know? More choices. But. The girls. Always love the boys. Except they're. Only gangers do, you know, they're cold-blooded, but. Yeah, so I told my mother, I'm gonna pick one right on, give her a right one, so. She, I said, yeah, I heard you wanted to do that. I said, I could run into patrol or the way they have all, uh, fire attendants, I could pull out those and look at any kid. And anywhere, you know, so but I didn't do it out, did it. So guess what? You know, you're not allowed to do that. That's private, that's confidential, with them, their lawyer, the court. And mommy and daddy, if they got both. Most of them didn't. And it was always a sad situation for their whole life. You know, a lot of them were just born into a losing situation. And they're. I guess not.
That's wishful. Wishful thinking.
Wasn't it?
Wishful thinking.
Almost dying.
Yeah, this is, you're not doing it. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that's about it, I can't do that. Well, if you're gonna do it, I can do that. They got it, it's actually. I don't think you can be shut up. Yes, you were, you know, that's it. Hey, look. Yeah. I was. Please. Take some of that off, get it. Maybe this makes. We're gonna take this, all right, I'm just being careful, just checking. See it first. Yeah. See this. Here you are. It's not the biggest house. It's the third. Yeah, this is, that's the price. And that's just. On, strawberry, we got this. On there. Yeah, this is really cool. And that, you know. I feel that is, you see, because I was a really. So the personal, so, I mean, she was excited to say this, so. So that's why I'm still here, so I can talk about, uh, that. It's. Have, so there's two things that we're talking about. They're all about the, just, it's. Well. I can see. That's the, the herbs. Okay. This is, this is. So, and they came back, and come across some of those, and you're like, sir. Arguing about the, about the, so. That's that, that's, uh, Mr. Jesus.
Where did the student go? Huh? He's not white. March was still nowhere, but. Now I gotta be. But they, what, after you said, they leave it unlocked. So tonight, I'll probably find it unlocked. So I think they dumped it on Tuesdays. General wants the cameras on it. You know, they set it on fire, right? They had some of the vent over there, and it was a wedding, like. Our folks, you were all, right? I was here. And. I had gone to trash in the dumpster, walked back to my car, and pretty much, four hours. And these people, those guys, they stand there, and they, they'll be, do a barbecue going, you know, drink a beer, just that little. Whatever, you know, I think about it. Because I know whoever, patrol, well, crews department, so. And then some women came out. And the next thing I know. Um, oh, and that's before they started putting a lock on it. So. Um. You know, women went back over. They always go through the corner there. And. Ah, it's like, yeah. So. Well, I, they're silver to me, so. But, so anyway. Then all of a sudden, I see, guys got tailgate open. And I didn't see them, because I know, and I always check about them.
And, um. So. I think it was fuel, right? But they still had an adventure. So then I checked the bathroom, got the jack locked in. And then. Went back, dumped out, and went back to my car. And, and they were all. There's some, but I didn't see. They had dumped, they were using holes. And they had dumped it in the dumpster. I didn't see it, smell it, but. If I could smell, neither would come in when I push it out. Yeah, so they caught fire. And they shucked it, lit it. Bit by day. So when it caught fire, no, it all lose. And, um, anyway. But people, we see, friend, like almost friend advice, call in, deep, all kinds of stuff thrown in there. I think the landlord went out here and he moved stuff out. They just use that dumpster. So. She's, she's noticing the tubes, she said to him. They started locking it back with the fire. It's in the trash guys, they don't lock it back up. And they have, they have a key that's hanging in here. I don't know who was supposed to do it, both of them, somebody. And I kept waiting for a coffee. This is a hassle for you to take the key out and then come back and hang it like some. I might have told her, I'm gonna take it, I took it on Friday. And I took it, part of it longer and ten something, two keys. The extra key for Deborah. And one for me. And then home, the original back up, but. So I'm happy to have a little one. This is probably half one keys. Not even. Because then I have twenty four keys, library, airport. Other, well, I don't have a lot of. But the keychain has a three function. Ah. Yeah, they show. They came to fall, but tomorrow. I just flip them, it's back on our top. I always thought that they dumped that at the same time they dumped this, I guess. Then sometimes it's more all week. But the cheap hook of those boxes got dumped out. I'm gonna start having to carry that box covered in my car, this. Then you can be cut down. Cut fire. He usually takes them. I think he bring them all here and throw them in the dump. I don't worry, he'll help you, bro. He throws them somewhere. He takes them. Which I always take them. And most of the time, my car's full. And this car bigger than what I've been on. Yeah, I think it's a hundred and thirty two miles per gallon. What's wrong? Why don't you pack it back? And sell it to twenty one? I make it a hell of a, many, million dollars. And, uh, because when he takes the car to service, he takes it off the car. It just plugs in. But yeah, he, he though off now, get made to. So it's just like the first one, he does it himself. And I was getting a hundred and thirty two or thirty six. And you would understand all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I have a, there's a little chip that goes on your hood, like your control unit. And it helps control how the engine responds when you have to break any gas. Um, and that plays a huge role in.
Well, these are small cars, even before they got to what they are now. They never burned. Optimum of fuel when the engine. It was like, and he says it's a gasoline manufacturer. They don't, they don't want anything improved. And he said, you know, the general public has no idea these guys have come up with these genius ways to make them more fuel efficient, whatever. They turn around and they watch the patents and what. And so how do you find these people and they offer them so many millions, millions of dollars? Oh, I'm just vulgar. You know, he said, but there's people too, that just disappear. He said, so, and I'll know, I'm not gonna attack this thing and try it itself. I said, just go to test hall.
How's that gonna do that if you don't break gas at all?
Well, no, it's not about just the gas, it also optimizes the way the electric works in the car. That's why he got. He expanded from the gas, either a ten dollar tank or a nine dollar tank, but never be. I had a Toyota with Pierce trying to advance, which is a sports car, you know, you know, I wanted to dealership here. I'm originally California, so I know that over there. And they go, where it, what? Then I say, I, so I explain, tell them, tell them, where it at? You know, look it up. Well, okay, we'll try it. Of course, they go, yeah. So they had to order the car, uh, whether it was two months, two weeks, built, and shipped here. And they came into a galison and repaired to somewhere else, and then everyone, like their flat, they made the. I mean, I was just worried over, you know. Oh, I love that car. I mean, it's hard to charge it. I've filled once a lot. And I come here six days a week from Yancey. We're talking sixty six to sixty eight, ninety miles round trip every night, six days a week. And then, uh, then I go, huh, all in the morning, on Tuesday. Thursday. And I just, more than before that background, I just would always want to do my shopping. Would do it on the way home from work or whatever, Tuesday, Thursday. Now? I bought a Chevy Equinox, I was whole, over, it was good, huh? Over four hundred dollars. So. I might be getting another dump. And I might not be doing this anymore, I think I'm forty. That was, I totaled three cars so far. I had. Once the first time, see that was. Two years ago? Yeah. You wanna hit the deer. And then, and that was the Chevy Polo. Well, I actually didn't hit him. He'd come, I was doing maybe ten miles an hour at that. And just backed up and started to go and pick up my down, both of them, we don't have no luck. And he coming, jumped on the hood. Bang, right? And I'm like, hmm. So I slammed on the brakes, they kind of, right? Well, no, kind of pushing him back into it, and. So he goes to jump on the car. What a wonderful deer. He went down. Bang. He kicked out, hold that one on this side. Bang, went down. And she dropped that grill. I think that passed that car, seven thousand dollars. And. But he messed it up bad enough. Didn't drive it, so had his head, so fell down. And then I just had a lot of Prius, and the family of all this. Huh?
The hogs.
And then, then I hit three hogs. My daddy, in total, Prius, or I thought I had. No airbag went off at all.
I.
It was a fair bit of bang.
I had a friend in high school who had a Prius. And he, I forget what he hit. But, uh, the airbag didn't go off, the midship popped out, flew out from the ice.
None of that happened, it just looked like the whole car had a problem. So they gave me a rental car. And I thought for sure they totaled that car, they put twenty seven thousand dollars and fixed it. And I had it, I don't, I haven't even had it a full year, right? So, and it was a forty one thousand dollar car, so insurance went ahead and fixed it. One day short of being a year. I had one hog in every single airbag in the whole car, right? About the same amount of front end damage, but it was a little lower. So they totaled the car. And I had, I had this other job I was doing out in the ranch when COVID hit, the, the guys said, oh, I can't come clean anymore. Well, anyway, it was about great, just money. So I was doubled down and tripled. So I owed like twenty thousand on the car. And I don't, so that's one year, we're going into the second year, but I owed like, well, actually less than twenty. The rest was all in maintenance plan, now there's like. And. Because it was about fifty seven thousand dollars. I had to find it. So they turned around, of course, and they funded my, I had a hired attorney. My insurance company. They compared the car to a Prius. A regular Prius. So even the guy at the dealership, when I went to go get some papers under it, for the GAD insurance company, he goes. They compared it to what? He said, that's like a wolf's voice to a wolf's wag. You can't, you can't do that kind of care. I said, well, the GAD company's telling them that. They have to redo their appraisal, their eval or whatever they call it. They just did that. Two months ago. Did the reeval. August thirtieth was one year from the accident. I thought I got two years to sue. So I have to go out there, Allstate. The GAD insurance company, because Allstate told them, they made the car off. GAD insurance didn't contact Toyota to make sure it was paid off. Toyota turned around, it's calling me, I owe them five hundred and forty one dollars on the whole line, what, what's five hundred for? You guys owe me almost five thousand with all the refunds and stuff. Even the GAD insurance, how have you never sent nothing to the GAD insurance company? It's an open claim, they pay it to you. Well, no, deductible. I said, the deductible will stay to my insurance company. They don't get it, we get it. Insurance company says, they don't get it. They're not a repair shop or anything, or mechanic, they don't get it. So of course I looked it up, and I get a lawyer, and Toyota don't get it. But Toyota wanted to mess with me. So they turned around and put nonpayment, added interest and all such stuff. The second she totaled the car, the loan freezes. No more interest added to it, no more payments are made, blah, blah, blah. Hit my bank three times for payments, blah, blah, blah. Bank gave it back, just along. So then they turned around, they get all three credentials. My score went from eight hundred, eight hundred and one or two on one. And then the other two were seven hundred and eighty, seven ninety. I'm down to six twelve on one. Six twenty six just run up on another one. And six fifty one on experience. That's why. Fair and, that's the only one, it's just a couple points to prepare all the rest during fourth or fifth or bad. Because all the arbitrary ones take away. Still not paid off, never been paid for months and months and months, months, they call this back again. So now I've got to sue all four of them. GAD for not checking with Toyota, Toyota for not getting the money out of that. And for lying and fraud, what they've done, against federal law, to do what they've done. So. Who's there? Well, I gotta have an attorney. I'm seventy four years old. If I just drop the ball, it'll take seven years to drop off my credit. I mean, I didn't live that long. Why? I, I could have heard the cheese. I should have not talked. I could have been out of here. Now, now I gotta bring that off. We need to go home, we've got some sleep. Are you guys moving back in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
You won't be here long, though.
Nope.
All right. I'm, I'm getting the trash.
Well, thank you.
Get out of here, I'm gonna give you this piece of garbage.
So Deborah had me money.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I don't owe her money, but the two, the two less a dollar.
We have one item left, actually.
You actually moved one down. Item seven.
Yep. Tell me when you're ready, Deborah.
Neither of us.
That was a setup. I think you knew you weren't gonna be done that.
They wanted your money. All right, we're gonna reconvene in open session at nine fifteen. Next item is considered possible actions resulting from items posted and legally discussed in the executive session. We have no action on those. Uh, last item is item number seven that we moved to the end. Um, so this is discussion and take appropriate action on the city's actions and commitment to support the community's response to proposed priorities, action plan, and other elements of community response to the town hall with Bryce Cox. Um, so. I, I don't know that we have absolute clear direction, I think that, that overall, it is making sure that, um, that the develop, that we develop the plan, uh, according to Bryce's outline of the documents that we need to produce. We've got some more diligence to actually compile those and make sure that it's very clear about what the actual output of this is gonna be. Uh, but I would, uh, what I would ask for, for, um, council support on is conveying a message to our developers that, uh, if they want incentives, if they want, uh, participation from the city, that they would follow the design plans that have been outlined, outlaid with this, and that they would consult with these, uh, city planters, uh, as will prescribe in our documentation, uh, if they want to have any kind of particip- participation.
Specifically, what I've requested, I, I referenced this earlier, but I've requested a proposal from Bryce Cox, is with our legal counsel, and from, uh, John Anderson, who's one of the folks who was participating in the lecture series, and he was one of the principals that helped develop all the design work we see back there. Uh, to provide me a proposal with updating our, uh, comprehensive plan, made, to a couple of major elements to that, and that, that's what you heard Bryce talk about at the town hall last night. So that's the land use plan, transportation, uh, element, those are two items that need to be updated. Um, there will be some shared responsibilities, we already have Q D doing some of that, we've got the, the, uh, counties, uh, engineered doing some of that as well. And then to develop, help us develop part, pieces in U D O, and to bring these transact, concept, concepts into our, our code. And the concept is not to replace our code wholesale, but rather, as we identify pieces that can be adopted, we adopt those, and eventually, well, you know, over, over a course of time, we'll have a new code, right? But not to actually try to replace it all at once. I anticipate that effort to cost between seventy five thousand and a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, I don't have a proposal yet, and I don't have a timeline. There would be multiple public meetings, there would be chirets, like you've seen before. Um, and, and again, I'm anticipating this is a month's long process, it could take easily up to a year to actually complete. Um, but it's not gonna be as intensive as trying to do an entire comprehensive, comprehensive plan. I don't think anybody believes that that, that's necessary.
So if you talk about the, the phased in plan, that is dealing with the individual developers on an individual basis, making sure that they're going to our city planners to do that, what comes out of that goes into the, the new form base code that starts in our E T J, uh, and.
And think about, like, things like night skies, we've got to perfect that. Um, uh, there was one that was mentioned last night that I, I didn't speak up and say, hey, that's actually already in the works, but, uh, tree preservation, so someone brought it up.
Right.
That's actually something where, yeah, it's a tree preservation, night sky.
Tree creation, quite honestly, as you're starting to do your development, specifying what actual trees have to go in.
And the transportation planning, you know, some of the.
They're in the development code for Alsatian Oaks.
The street design standards that were, that.
But I think, I think there's actually more, but.
Well.
But I think that we'll get into that, uh, he was saying that there are tree standards in Alsatian Oaks. Uh, I think that is, uh, I think that that can be refined and improved, because one of the things that, that we learned during the series is that street trees actually make a big difference in creating not just the atmosphere, not just the walkability because of the shade, but it actually slows people down because of the visual elements of that.
And we, I think the goal is to be more precise with what we're trying to, to, to direct people to do, not to say we need trees, but you need trees of this caliber or this genus in this location, planted like this, with subtraneous, you know, root system, uh, things that help the trees, tree be live and that kind of stuff, so, yeah. So that, all those pieces, there are different pieces that are in development now that will help serve the development, but that will also serve the community as parts of our U D O.
I'm on board.
Yep.
And if we accomplish this, this is one of the, when we talked about what they did in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, uh, I say they, Paul was a part of that, and I don't think, Phil, you were a part of that, but, um, one of the biggest things that they had meant to accomplish was to actually develop this, and twenty years later, it's not done. So, uh, I think that we will accomplish something tremendous in carrying on the legacy of what they had, had put out, adding on to that what we've learned.
You turn for the vision plan?
Yeah.
No, they put the vision plan. C C H A.
C C H A. How much that cost you?
Like a fifty thousand dollar deal, but they got the grant, and for the grant, they did the vision plan.
And there's not, there's some chance that we might go get a grant to do some of this as well. Um, my goal is to bring a proposal October eleventh, and the source of funding for this, which will be described on the eleventh, would be the C I P. There's several planning items in there, there was a downtown master plan, some of the things that were conceived, we pull from those buckets out of the C I P with our fund. And I owe you, I think on October eleventh is when we will have our C I P discussion. And that's a tremendous amount of work.
So I, I don't know that we need to necess, I, I think what I'll do is I'll put together an actual motion for next time. Um, I just want to open it up for discussion, if there's any part of this that you think that we need to rethink, any part of this that you think is, um, could be improved. All right, you guys? All right. Well, we are through the agenda, and, uh, it is time to adjourn at nine twenty one.